Good evening, folks. We are ready to begin. Thank you for your patience. The issue has been resolved somewhat. So the meeting tonight is not being streamed live on Channel 8. That's the glitch, but it doesn't have to be. That is something that we typically do in the city. But it is working on all other ends. And so from my understanding, from the IT department, the very hardworking and sweating like crazy right now IT department is that they are going to record the meeting like they normally do. They will play it as soon as they can after the meeting is over. And they will be working on the glitch continuing through before the public hearing. And if they can get it squared away before the public hearing, then they will go live on Channel 8. But either way, both the informal meeting that was supposed to begin at 6 o'clock and the public hearing that's supposed to begin at 7:30 will, they will both be recorded and they will both go on as we had planned from here. So again, thank you for your patience. This has never happened here since I've been in a city councillor, but this is the first time for everything. So again, I appreciate all of your patience and we will begin the meeting without further ado. So, good evening. This is an informal meeting of the Gardner City Council on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Present.
Councillor Craig Cormier. Councillor Darren Lowitz.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Present.
Councillor Heath.
Present.
Councillor Haglen.
Present.
Councillor Mack.
Present.
Councillor Tebow Muniz.
Present.
Councillor DeSau.
Present.
Councillor Tyres.
Present.
President Kaczynski.
Present. We have a quorum present. Councillor Cormier did have a prior commitment that was planned before this meeting was scheduled, and he may be here before the meeting ends. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Just state your name and your address or company.
I'm WVJ in Boston. It's 1170 Solridge Boulevard.
Thank you. If there is anyone in the overflow room this evening recording the meeting, if you could go over to Brandy, she is over by the right exit of Perry Auditorium. So if there's anybody in Perry Auditorium recording the meeting, please go to Brandy. She's probably waving her hand right now. And please give her your name and address or company to let her know that you are recording tonight's meeting, and she will communicate that to me and I will announce that as well. For the public watching this evening, we are meeting informally tonight regarding City Council Agenda Item Number 11317, a vote to determine if a track of land located at 827 Green Street be approved as a location of a running horse racing track where race meetings laid out and conducted by licensees under Mass General Law, Chapter 128A, will be held or conducted. This item was posted publicly in the City Council Regular Meeting Packet for the Monday, June 17th, 2024, and July 1st, 2024 meetings where the City Council voted on July 1st to meet as a committee of the whole on this item, which is our purpose for meeting this evening. If you could please silence your phones. Informal meetings allow for a presentation of an item and for the council to ask questions on the meeting topic. Also for the public watching this evening, there will be no official vote taken this evening on Item 11317. The earliest that a vote can be taken on this item would be during the council's next regular meeting, but there will be no official vote taken this evening. Following tonight's informal meeting at 7:30 PM, there is a public hearing scheduled on Item 11317. Representatives from Bay State Racing are here this evening to give a presentation, provide information, and answer questions on the topic of the meeting. Thank you for being here. And with that, we will start with the presentation.
Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you, Madam President, councillors, clerk, city assistant solicitor, and residents of Gardner for the opportunity to speak with you and talk with you about our proposal to breeding, racing, training to 827 Green Street, which is currently the location of GAMA. It has been, racing, breeding, and training has occurred on this site, starting with Dr. Andrews in 1875, in letters of blank, who was considered one of the foremost trainers in New England. And from there, it ends in the hands of GAMA. GAMA currently uses the facility in a noteworthy way, using horses for therapy. They currently have two pregnant mares on the site, along with a host of other animals that exist on the site. It is our hope to be engaged and productive with the community and to be good neighbors. We want to maintain the existing farm as it exists today with the addition of renovating the barns and the buildings, building a track, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We would become as the 54th business to join the city in the last few years. We would be the largest taxpayer in the city by a factor of at least two, and we would improve the stormwater management and environmental conditions on the site, and we would support other local businesses. With that, I'd like to walk through a few slides that we have here this evening to talk a little bit about our team, our proposal, some of the details, and then answer any and all questions you have. First, our team. We've assembled a team of folks who are recognized in their area for their skill and integrity. For our architects, David Schwars, those architects designed colleges and universities and hospitals and racetracks. Our engineering firms, we have three different engineering firms. Each of them is noteworthy, VHB, Goddard Consulting, and Haley Albridge. Each of them have an expertise in a different area. Haley Albridge in water quality and geotech, VHB in civil, and Goddard in wetlands. Our law firm, Merrick O'Connell, is also here this evening, and Lou Raffetto, who is a recognized racing consultant. Also in the room, we have with us our partners, the New England Horse Owners and the Massachusetts Breeders Association, who have been partners in this. They represent some 1,200 horse farms all over Massachusetts. We also have with us our lead investor, Saki Gangar, who is sitting in the second row with us this evening. All of our materials, by the way, if folks are looking for anything that is referenced this evening and that is talked about, everything we have sent to the city plus a bunch of things that we've been asked, we've posted on our website. We have compiled a list of frequently asked questions, which is also on our website, and all of the documents the city produced is also on our website. So you can go to baystatracingllc.com, and you can find anything and everything relative to this process. It is our goal to be as transparent and as direct as we can possibly be. Next slide, please. So this is the site as it exists today. We have just, we're just in the process of finishing the surveying of the site, which is an enormous process, and we're getting towards the end of that. If you look at the slide that you see here, you can see that about half the site, maybe a third, is in green. That is vegetated wetlands areas. This whitish area are uplands or areas that are not in the wetlands. There is existing a house, two barns, an existing track. Folks have asked us why we don't use the existing track. It's a five eighths mile track. It's for standard breeds. It is safer for thoroughbreds to race on turf, and so we would construct our own turf in this uplands that exists over here, which I'll get to in a minute. To orient everybody, you've got Winchendon over here, you've got Groupon 40. Just off the edge of the site is the Pearlie Brook, which has gotten a lot of attention. South of us is the golf course, Mount Wachusett, to give you a sense of where the site is and what's going on. One of the things I wanted to report back to the council, if you have not heard, it's in the letter that's in front of you. We were asked to meet with DEP. We have met with DEP. We met with them for about 70 minutes. We had our engineers with us on site. Also there was the Assistant City Solicitor, the DPW Director, the Engineer, and another person from DPW. It was the Director, the Deputy Director, and several members of the Water Quality Control. We walked through our plans for the site. They walked through their requirements for us. The Director, a direct quote from her, I believe, and you can ask her, Solicitor, was the site would benefit greatly from a enhanced or top-notch stormwater management plan. We planned to do that, and we committed to do that. The DEP Director also said that when the city is done with its review, they will review it and make sure it meets all of the standards, and we would be required to apply to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for a water quality certificate to ensure compliance with any and all regulations that exist. So I want to report back on that. Next slide, please. The community process. Why are we here tonight? Because the state has laid out a process where you start with the use. The use starts with the council, not akin to zoning or some other process. And from that, we then have to enter into a host community agreement with the mayor, which lays out our financial terms, our obligations to the community. It is a legally binding document. We then have to apply to the Gaming Commission for a racing license. They will hold a hearing in Gardner. It will be an adjudatory hearing for the lawyers in the room. It means it's one held with sworn testimony. Anyone and everyone in the community can testify and be part of that. They will solicit input. Then they will come to their conclusions, and they will vote on their application. Then we will go to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, Conservation for Wetlands Delineation and Wetlands Regulations, and the Planning Board for Traffic Review and the like. Those processes will go through in great detail, the various details of each of those things, and we're required to follow specific rules and regulations. We would then go to DEP to review the decisions that are made for compliance with their regulations, and a water quality certificate, which we would exist. This site, which you just saw, about a third or a half of this site is in the stormwater, groundwater protection overlay district. And in that context, about, to put that in context, about 20% of the city, maybe 25% of the city, is in that overlay district, including your hospital, including your golf course, your cemetery, and most of the area that is around this site. So we're following, we'll follow the same regulations and rules. It is our intention, if we could go to the next slide, to continue breeding and training, off-track retirement, agricultural and equestrian festivals on the site, to collaborate with local students to run and work with not just GAMA but others on safety as it relates to horses, and to have thoroughbred racing on the site. Next slide. I think I mentioned earlier, but these are a series of news clips and other issues relative to the site. The site has been active as a horse farm. The first slide, if you can look it in your head, which is a picture, first couple of slides, a picture of the site, that view of the site you see today, the 75-foot-tall white pines along the Pearlie Brook on the east side of the site, the old track that exists there, the pastures, the barns, and the house, that view is not going to change. The houses will get a little bit of a facelift. They may be, architects want to make them so they all look similar to each other, so we may paint them all red and deal with it. But what you see there today from the street, you will see. What, in addition to that, will you see? You will see a gazebo. We'll have some covered structure for inclement weather or something else, and we'll put in some utilities so that food trucks around festivals for the one, two, three weekends a year, we run a festival, that there is an ability for them to connect to power, and we will build a track. And that has occurred on this site for some time. Next slide, please. So this is the same slide. Now we've overlaid a concept on this, and it's important for me to put a big giant asterisk next to this for everybody. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board will require us to do multiple concepts of what a track would look like on this site. This is one of those concepts. This is an iterative process, and we will have to go through, first, the delineation of the wetlands and the rules, and laying out the buffers that exist. Then after we do that, we'll have to lay out the track on the site, and we'll have to come up with a few different alternatives. What you see on this site and this track is you see the existing house, the existing barns, parking, a gazebo. This brown line is pedestrian access to and from. You see the existing track. The access will remain the same, and this is the track that we envision. We do not envision building stadium because we envision using the side of the hill. If you can imagine, this is a hill that flows down, and we would build into the side of the hill, like you see in your slides, and we'll get to it in a minute, stadium seating, where you could have a tent, or you could sit on the grass, or a blanket, or something else. Think of tangled wood, or great woods, or some kind of outdoor amphitheater. It has a lot of flexibility. We can bring in tents, we can put in tables, chairs, but it would remain natural and open. Again, a typical day on this site, 365 days a year, you're going to see somewhere between five and 25 or 30 horses on this site. The number of horses will vary based on horses coming in for retirement, the number of horses that are going through, and I'll talk about that in a minute, the number of horses that are being retrained, the horses that are being bred on the site as part of what they do until they end up at their ultimate horse farm, and there'll be a handful of working horses. We will have a similar or lower census of animals and a similar or lower census of people on this site on an average day. Say that again. Likely fewer animals and fewer people on this site on an average day. On the days that we race, and racing will be determined based on purses and horses, of which there is a limited pool, the state supplies for purses. We would race, we believe right now we can race one weekend a year. We'd like to get to two weekends a year. The turf track, while it is safer for the horses, can only be used for a weekend every two or three weeks. So you end up with a track that we couldn't use at much more than the interval we're talking about even if we wanted to. We want to avoid other race meets that are going on in the area, and we want to avoid other major events that are going on. We'd likely look at an event in late spring, early summer, and an event in late to mid-fall. So you end up with one in the spring, one in the fall. Those events are important because just as a, someone who's producing lettuce brings their produce to the farmer's market, for a horse farm, the track and the race is how they sell their agricultural product. They bring their horse to the track to be shown, to be claimed, to be sold, or to get prizes. The first six horses in a race, in proportion, receive a piece of the purse money. This track would disperse about $4 million a year to racetrack owners all over the Commonwealth. That enables those racetrack owner, those race, horse farm owners, to be able to maintain their farms, to keep them from being developed, and to earn their livelihood and to do what they think is important. I'll talk about horse safety in a minute as we proceed. Next slide, please.
Excuse me. If you can just make sure you speak directly into the microphone when you're talking. Yeah, when you look away, it's hard to get recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Structures on the site. The top picture is a picture that was taken not too long ago from the site. As I said to you before, that picture is what you see today, and it's what you'll see five years from today, plus a gazebo. The picture below is an architect's concept of what the apron of the track might look like with an apron that extends down to the track and is grass, where people could sit with a blanket, or a chair, or a tent, or something else. The facility will have temporary facilities. There are people who bring the various needs of a track on a temporary basis for agricultural affairs and the like, so they would come in. The horses would arrive on a Thursday, they would race on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then they would depart. So you're looking at a three-day race. The track itself, the track in this race is dirt. Ours would be turf. It would be approximately 70 feet wide, about a mile in length as it goes around, depending on the shape and configuration as we go through the planning process. Next slide, please. The equine facility. We have started to talk a little bit about thoroughbred breeding. The breeding on this site would have a handful of horses that would go through the program, but the real essence is for the site and the program to be a catalyst for horse farms all across the Commonwealth to breed horses. So this would, the breeding would not only occur here, all over the Commonwealth. So the number of foals dropped in Massachusetts plummeted after Suffolk Downs closed to zero. And with that, the horse population begins to dwindle. With that, the horse farms become subject to development and closing. As foals are dropping, that population will grow. The revenue flows through the racetrack as an agricultural event, and those dollars then go to the horse farms, and the horse farms use that. By the way, the racetrack owners receive no reimbursement for conducting the race. We do not get any of that $4 million. I'll talk about our revenue stream in a minute, but we do not get a penny out of that $4 million. It all goes directly through to the horse owners. The training facility on the site with retirement, the horse owners contribute a piece of their revenue into a fund, and so that horses are not slaughtered or put out to pasture in a negative way. These equestrian athletes are retrained. On non-race days, the average census of horses, as I said, would be somewhere between five and 25. Next slide. The breeding program costs $35,000 to $50,000 associated with raising a foal. This program would generate about $350,000 a year in revenue, and we'll talk about that in a second, and it would cost us about $350,000 here in revenue. It's about revenue neutral, but that is, the jobs around the breeding piece of this is relative to the training. Not every thoroughbred horse would participate in racing. Other career options include eventing, dressage, jumping, polo, and other issues. The only equestrian gold medalist in U.S. history, Torrance Watkins, who lives not too far from here, has had 150 thoroughbreds. Every one of them are retired thoroughbreds. So these horses have a long lifespan in time after they're done racing. Next slide. Retirement. Somewhere between eight and 12, 15 horses a year. The New England horse owners take 3% of their revenue, and they put it into a fund. So when people talk about horses and how do you care for your horses, there are good dog owners, good cat owners, and there are bad ones. Massachusetts has been a leader in this category for decades, and the Massachusetts breeders and owners have put aside a percentage of their money to ensure that the horses, when they finish their life as an active equestrian athlete, have a period of time to get repurposed, retrained, so they can be used in treatment, in hunter junker, or something else. Next slide. The festivals themselves. Is a weekend, you can expect horses to come in on a Thursday. Again, we're talking one, two, maybe three weekends a year, never more than 20 days in a calendar year. The festivals themselves will be pageantry, music on a Friday night as part of it. They'll be family-friendly. They'll have themes associated with them. They're designed to be fun. We are incredibly heavily regulated. There will be local police on-site, state police on-site, which we will pay for. This will be the safest place to be in Gardner on a race day. And when it's not a race day, there'll be horses breeding there. Wagering on the site will exist in temporary kiosks on race days only. There is no wagering on this site if there is not a race day. So those one, two, three weekends a year, you can wager on a horse race on this site. You cannot and never will be able to bet on a Red Sox game or a Patriots game. There is no sports wagering going on here. There is no restaurant here. There is no bar. The onsite gang will only be as part of that. 95% of our revenue, and I will get to that, occurs on this little device. Our revenue occurs from people wagering all over the Commonwealth on races all over the country. So if you're in Boston, and you're wagering on your phone in a race in New Jersey, or New York, or California, we, because of our license, will get a piece of that. And through that piece of that, that's how we will pay the city, that's how we will pay to operate the racing operations, that's how we will underwrite the retirement and the breeding operations. So we make our money in one bucket, and we pay for things in other buckets. And I'm going to go through that business model in a minute, but there'll be no sports wagering on this site. Next slide. Community partnerships. I've spent 35 years in and around local and state governments. I've worked a lot of partnerships with a lot of groups. A good project is a good neighbor. A good company in a community participates in the community and helps others grow. So what kind of partnerships would we have? We'll work with GAMA to make sure that our philanthropic owners and investors are donating and participating with GAMA, that our owners of horses who are foremost experts in race horses and thoroughbreds are training their teachers and working with their clients, helping their clients get jobs. This can be a way for someone who is interested in horses to have a meaningful career path. In addition to that, we've spoken with the Mount and Stockbridge Community College at UMass about collaborating with them, with their students, doing internship programs. We would pay their students as part of an internship program to learn and develop large animal vet tech and the like. This is an opportunity. I'm not speaking out of turn. They're excited about the program. We would promote partnerships with local businesses. If you can imagine, in one weekend, we can generate the revenue for a local business that's the equivalent of them having another week worth of revenue for their employees and their folks. Imagine Gardner Real House having a beer garden on the site. Imagine the Blue Moon serving breakfast to 200 people for four days, or Williams Restaurant serving dinner or lunch in a catered fashion to people. When you bring people together for a short period of time, you have to feed them. The colonial will be filled for the five days around each of our events. Those are revenues that will come to the city in Hotel Melto and beer and food packs. And lastly, we've worked with the mayor to include in the host community agreement a requirement that we contribute $20,000 a year to local charitable organizations. That's our way to help local organizations that are making a meaningful impact in the community to make sure they can buy new uniforms, that they can pay their coaches or their referees, or do whatever it is they need to do with arts, culture, education. Next slide. Next slide. As I said to you, as the 54th new business in the last few years, we would instantly be your largest taxpayer. So if you look at this site today, it's a not-for-profit that is on the site, but they would pay in taxes today $15,000 on this site. We would enter into an agreement to pay $500,000 a year approximately to the city, and we've negotiated with the mayor and the solicitor that that would have an escalator clause in it, and that escalator would climb at the same rate that your taxpayers increase their taxes each year. So if your levy goes up by 2.5%, we would go up by 2.5%. You go up by 1%, we'd go up by 1%. Whatever everyone else in the community does, we would follow that, and so our value would increase and grow each and every year. Next slide. Benefits for Gardner. Will help grow the local economy. We're proud to have support from the regional tourism, the regional chamber, the regional labor organizations to create jobs. Will create a venue for functions, for a wedding, for a community benefit. If a local team or organization wants to put an event on, we'll have a place that will have parking spaces and an ability to put something together. We will invest $25 million into this site. That means we will upgrade the utilities. We will upgrade the groundwater management. We will improve the site, and we will create jobs in the process. 15 to 25 permanent jobs and more than 100 temporary jobs. The temporary jobs can be very meaningful jobs, paying people that are retired or in need of a second source of income. We've agreed to plant trees and to a tree planting program in the city with the mayor, so that we are replacing and replenishing more than the trees that we are removing from the site, and will preserve the open space, and will connect to the central pathway, which is along the eastern border of the city. Next slide. Supporting local agriculture. We've talked a little bit about this, so I can skip most of this, but there are lots of hay farms and horse farms in the area that don't have an outlet for revenue. This site will be a major consumer of hay, and hay is not just grass that's too long that you've cut down. The horse owners want an alfalfa content, a bluegrass content, a red clover content, depending on whether the horse is sick or it's racing. So the hay's tend to get a premium value, and it is good for the local agricultural community. Next slide, please. The challenge in Massachusetts, why does Massachusetts put up $4 million a year? For purse money. Because they support the agricultural purposes of these farms, and these farms are being lost each and every day. We are the sixth in disappearing open spaces. This enables open spaces not only to be preserved here, but open spaces across the Commonwealth as well. Professor Emeritus at UMass, John Mullin, a few years back did a study on what equestrian facility would do for the economy and what it means to the Commonwealth. This location is a local business, for sure. It's a local commercial agricultural operation. But in addition to that, it is a conduit for commercial agricultural operations all across the Commonwealth. And we won't generate the revenue that this talks about, because we're not doing everything in this study, but we're doing a big chunk of the things that are in this study, and some of the other things in this study are being done in other horse farms around the Commonwealth. That will have significant impact on the revenue of those areas. So John asked him accomplice and his son, who are leading trainers from Pittsburgh. They will end up with a dozen, 15, 20 more horses in terms of where they are and the revenue associated with that, and each of those horses, they will hire people to care for those horses. Some of them will go through the vet tech programs here at UMass, and they'll be connected, and they'll find a job. Next slide. Those jobs, this is a list of some of the jobs that you'll see that are there. Some of them are temporary around race day. Some of them are folks that visit the site periodically or regularly, but they are a lot of different professional activities that go into caring for a horse. One horse requires seven different people to take care of. So you're talking about a lot of horses, you're talking about a lot of people. Next slide. So we've been asked a bunch of questions. That's the end of my presentation, but I wanted to address a handful of frequently asked questions that I assume would be asked because they've been part of our conversation in the community. First and foremost, wetlands and water protection. So as we've talked about, I talked about the DEP meeting, and in your packets is a letter that goes through the DEP meeting in terms of what we did. This site, as we all know, is part of the Surface Water Protection Overlay District. It covers about 20, 25% of the entire city of Gardner. As I said before, it covers the hospital, the college, it covers the cemetery, and the golf course. This overlay protection district is not just us. It's a huge swath of property to the community. As part of what we need to do is, we're a heavily regulated group. We're going to have to go and go to the Conservation Commission, and we're going to have to go to DEP, and we're going to have to go to the Mass Gaming Commission. A few items that have been raised. Manure. We're not going to keep manure in a pile. We will be required to collect it, to store it, and to remove it in an encapsulated facility off-site. So manure will not be allowed to sit on-site. It will be required to be removed. That's an improvement. Water. We'll be introducing new buffers in the construction of rain gardens to purify groundwater. We need to, by regulation, treat our groundwater on our site. That means before our groundwater leaves our site, we need to improve our groundwater. That means we need to make sure that it goes through channels of filtration. They call those rain gardens and swales and the like. You see a little building that we would, is a typical kind of design for a manure container. In addition to that, DEP will require us to get a water quality certificate when we're done, and we will have to demonstrate that we are doing these things. As I mentioned earlier, the Central Office DEP Director specifically stated this site will benefit from, quote, "a top-of-the-line stormwater manager." We will improve the stormwater flow from this site. Period. The buffers near the Pearly Brook, which flows on the east side of the site, where you see those groves of very large white pines, where, that's on the east side of the site, over here, this is the Pearly Brook, just off the site. Our main work is going to be on the west side of the site, in the Highlands, on the other side of the site. Next slide. Horse welfare. This is something that our group and owners spend an enormous amount of time talking about. Massachusetts has been a leader in anti-doping and anti-slaughter. In Massachusetts for decades, if you sell your horse off to be slaughtered, you are banned from, for life, from racing in Massachusetts. It is a very severe penalty. Congress getting into this space because of poor actors in it created two years ago something called HISA, the Horse Integrity and Safety Authority. It now regulates and, as everyone is required to follow, including us, the regulations that they have recently promulgated, which largely mirror the kind of regulations that Massachusetts has used for a long period of time. The owners here, and they're here with us today, are committed, and you'll hear about this in your testimony, they're committed to using the safest and best practices. Next slide. Before each and every race, a qualified veterinarian will independently review each and every horse. So you see races, if you go to Saratoga or someplace else, and maybe there are 10 horses listed on that race, but only nine horses race. Well, maybe one didn't show up, or the veterinarian looked at the horse and said, "This horse isn't racing today." The veterinarian has that kind of power, and the veterinarian works for the gaming commission. They do not work for us. The question that I think, when I'm asked about this care that these horses get from veterinarians, is not whether they get sufficient care, but why we don't get the same care as humans. We talked about them being banned for substances. These horses are tested before the race and after the race. Their blood tested, and their, their hair is tested. The surface we're talking about is turf, which is gentler and stronger for the horses. Next slide. It's highly regulated. We talked about that. These areas around the track have 24/7 video monitoring. So anyone who is tampering with the horses, anyone who's going there, we're required to have security, and we're required to protect these equestrian athletes while they are in our care on our site. Next slide. Traffic. VHB is among the most qualified engineering consultants in the state, if not the country. We've looked at and done an analysis. We've given you that report as to the capacity of 140 to handle not only our average day traffic, which will be similar or less to what is there today, and our race day traffic. We will be required to meet with the planning board to do a full-blown traffic study, which we will pay for, and we will pay for the city to peer review that with a consultant of your choice to go through and work through our traffic and parking mitigation plans as the process continues. Next slide. This is a question I get asked from time to time, and I know it can be confusing. This is the business model, and I have to put a giant asterisk here, which is these numbers are generated with publicly available data from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, and they are guidelines. This is not our spreadsheet, because we don't know the business yet. But we have a pretty good idea. The breeding program is going to take in and is going to spend about $350,000 a year. It'll be a break-even activity. The racing operation will make, between food and beverage and onsite wagering, maybe $300,000 a year. It'll cost $1,008,000 for a couple of weekends. The retirement program, again, the horse owners will contribute about $150,000 to it, and they'll spend about that taking care of the horses, probably a little bit more. The wagering on off-site, that is the wagering occurring by people all over the Commonwealth on races all over the country, not in Gardner. Those folks will generate, will get a little piece of that, and will generate $5 to $8 million a year in revenue associated with it. It'll cost us about $1,004,000 to administer that. When you look at our expenditures, we're going to have capital costs on 28 million. We're going to have operations annually of 3.2 million, and we're going to pay in taxes to the city of Gardner $500,000. First few years, profits are pretty lean. Hopefully, with some, some good fortune, those profits will grow over time, and the business will make the money that the investors would like to make. I show this slide for a reason. This is not Win Everett Casino that has a spreadsheet of a billion four. This is a spreadsheet of $5 to $8 million. This is a very small operation in comparison to the kinds of facilities that you see. We make our money off of the wagering. No doubt about that. We also spend it in these other areas. Next slide. Lastly, folks, a lot of folks have contacted us, a lot of folks have visited our website. If you have questions, we're available. Email us, go to our website, call us, text us. Our contact information is out there. Go to baystateracingllc.com. All of the documents we've talked about are available there. We're happy to answer any and all questions, and I'm happy to do that for you folks, and I appreciate your time and for listening.
At this time, we will open it up to questions from the city councilors. Councilor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Stefani, thank you for that presentation. My first question is in relation to the company that is pushing for this proposal, because you are their lawyer. You're not the CEO or the owner of Bay State Racing. And the reason I ask that question is, I know tonight's, and the item before us is focused on the location and its appropriateness for horse track racing, but the Bay State Racing is pushing for this proposal to happen. It's not the city rezoning a section of town to try to draw business in. The two are very connected, the location and the company. And the reason I ask this, because Gardner is a relatively small community where you can, you know, know that, in most cases, the owners of the businesses that you're patronizing. If you go for a meal at the Ale House, Rick Walton's probably going to walk by and ask how it was. If you're looking for a pickleball set, and you go to John's Sports Shop and talk to Ann and Alan LeBlanc. And the reason I ask is because it would be new to Gardner to have a company with a substantial operation, even though it's small in terms of the industry, it is substantial for Gardner, and to not have local ownership. And on your first, one of your first slides, I saw you had a project team, and I was wondering if you could share a little bit about the company, its leadership team, its funding sources, how long it's been in operation, if it's operated in other communities, and for, you know, how long.
Thank you, counselor.
Excuse me one second. This microphone's going to work better. If you wouldn't mind having a seat or standing over to talk to the end of this microphone?
Thank you. Please don't mind my, my back. Thank you for your question, counselor. So a few things. First of all, we should talk a little bit about why Bay State was created and what happened. When Suffolk Downs closed, and the horse owners that received their revenue for their agricultural product through a race had no place to go, those horses started to move to other states, those farms started to close, and through my relationship with some of those investors and other folks, we started to look around and say, "How could we help these folks deal with this?" If we were looking at, the investors will make money on this, but if they were looking for a straight investment to make money, they'd make more money in Walmart down the street than they would in this investment. I am an investor in this project. I'm not the attorney for the project. The attorney for the project is Merrick O'Connell. They are here. I am also chair of the Racing Oversight Committee. I am here before you as the accountable person for this venture and this activity, and if you have a question, you call me. I have sat in your seat. I've, I've served in the legislature. I know what it's like to deal with constituent inquiries, and I know what it's like to be held accountable. And we are committed, and we have agreed with the mayor to include one of the seats on the Racing Oversight Committee for an appointment of the mayor, so that your community is active and engaged in what is going on, and in real time, you have somebody who's sitting at the table. In addition to that, we will have recognized experts in and around this community who are recognized in industry and racing that are a part of this, group of people that will oversee this. In addition to that, Bay State Racing, which is a relatively new investment vehicle for the company, their lead investor is Seki Ganger, who is here today. He is the lead investor in terms of the financial piece of that. He has been at every community reunion that we have done. He's been active and engaged in the community. In addition to that, we have other folks who are interested in investing, who have significant portfolios. In addition to that, the Massachusetts Gaming Commission requires each and every investor to present themselves to the Gaming Commission for suitability. That means they have to go through a rigorous background check, and they will ask us sworn questions as to our veracity, our integrity, our ability to follow through on what it is. So the person who is standing in front of you is accountable, and I have an ownership stake in this, and I am committed to Gardner as a community, and I want to be an active and engaged person in this community, and I have tried to do just that by going around and meeting with business owners and others. I do not live here, but I have grown to be fond of your community, and I'd like to become a bigger part of it. I've joined the chamber. I've joined the regional tourism group, and I have met and worked with probably 75 or so local business, local union members who are workers who are here. And we're committed, and our commitment to them is to hire local workers. Our commitment is to work with local businesses to use those businesses. I hope that answers your question.
Madam President, if I may. All right. Thank you for that answer. I'm not quite satisfied with that answer to my question, but I want to let my other councilors ask questions as well, but just very simply... But just very simply, has Bay State Racing completed any other projects in the Commonwealth? Are there any current operations? Because I do have questions for later this evening that are related to the operations that are intended for Bay State Racing, so.
So, Bay State Racing is a new entity. It is not something that has done other projects in the Commonwealth. It has not been associated with those. Some of the members of our team have been involved in numerous projects. I've done several hundred projects in my career in different forms. The members of our team have done other projects, but Bay State Racing is an entity that was formed and created to build a racetrack.
Thank you.
And there's no other racetrack in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question about the DEP Quality Control Certificate. How often do you have to apply for that? Is this a one-and-done? You get approved, it's cleared, you don't have to do it again? Is this a yearly thing?
So, the DEP Water Quality Certificate is a one-and-done certificate, but compliance with their regulations is ongoing. Their ability to inspect the site, as is the case with your local conservation agent, is ongoing. So, and in addition to that, we would be required on an annual basis to come back before the council and/or the mayor and talk about what we did last year that was good and bad, and what we're going to do the year ahead. We're licensed on an annual basis by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, which has subpoena power over us, and they do an annual hearing in the community. The Gaming Commission prides itself on listening to local communities, and if the council has something that we're not being responsive to, they'll subpoena it and they'll make sure you get it. But that authority on an ongoing basis, once we meet a standard of water quality, we have to continue to maintain that standard of water quality. So if someone shows up and we're not processing our manure correctly, we can be shut down and our license can be taken away from us. That is very significant penalty to us, so we are incentivized and committed to achieving the higher standards and maintaining the higher standards.
One other question, if I may. Thank you, Madam President. I was going off of your, the facts about the traffic. Just yesterday, I took a drive down Stone Street, and, you know, I was getting ready to try and take a turn on Stone Street. The question I have is, you're saying that there won't be any added to, well, added traffic to morning or evening rush hour? I personally haven't looked at the studies on how many accidents happen during those times, but there's a lot of accidents that happen right there. And it's not, from my understanding, it's not during those hours. I could be wrong, but the texts that I get from the officers, things of such, usually early in the morning, not rush hour, and usually towards the night. So that's a really big concern on my behalf over there, as I'm on record with Rep. Slotnick on the traffic control over there, besides, you know, this project here. So, I don't, I think that that part right there needs to be more looked at.
We would agree with you.
So, I mean, I would say, take a, you know, take a ride down yourself and turn onto Stone Street, because if you don't know it's there and you're coming in, you know.
So, let me address, let me address, thank you councillor for your question. I have spoken with quite a few residents on Stone Street, and the third or fourth resident I spoke to said to me, she said to me, "I'm concerned about traffic, people parking here on race day, and what it's going to mean and what it's going to do." This is great. We'll work with the city to hire a police officer at our cost, put him at the end of Stone Street, and if you're not a resident, you don't get up and down Stone Street on a race day. Now, that's something the city has to decide, because it's a public street, but we're committed to working with neighbors, with residents, on solutions. Relative to green and 140, we're going to have to get our traffic engineer, Rob Najee, who's here today, who's done big and small projects, and I've done numerous projects with him, is one of the leading professionals in this area. We're going to study this, and we're going to come back with what are the solutions that make this a safer intersection for purposes of what we're doing. Does that mean we hire troopers or local police to regulate the traffic before and after and during festivals, maybe? Does it mean we do some other kind of mitigation in that area? We're prepared to pay for the mitigation that's relative to our project, and we're prepared to study it with recognized professionals, and we're prepared to work with your planning board to work through those issues. And we'll need a vote from your planning board to accept that. And we will come back each and every year, per our host community agreement, to review our traffic and parking plan, and we will update it. If it didn't work one year, or it didn't work as well as it should have, we'll make an adjustment, and we will deal with that. But we take traffic seriously. We want people who come to our event not to say, "We're not going back next year because the traffic was terrible," or because there was that accident over there. We want people to leave and not think about traffic, and to think, "We had a lovely day at the races. We enjoyed what happened and what didn't happen." The other thing that's worth noting is our horse population is coming in and out with a specific group of people. We know who they are, when they're arriving, when they're departing, and we can place regulations on them in terms of when they arrive, when they depart, what their vehicles are, et cetera, which is not unusual. So they come in at a certain time, and they don't come in at another time. All of those kinds of issues and a whole bunch that I hadn't even thought of will be part of the engineering discussion on this, and will be public and part of the process, and we will review it each and every year with the mayor and the council. Period. I hope that answered your question.
Another question, Colleen. Councilor Matt?
Thank you. Last year, we were here over the same type of proposal for Bay State Racing, and it came up against a lot of resistance from the citizens. So I'm just curious, here we are in the same geographic location in Gardner, with the same concerns of environmental concerns, traffic concerns, that have all been, you know, addressed again. Why does Bay State Racing think this is a better proposal? And why is Bay State Racing so insistent on this racetrack here in Gardner, where, again, citizens have been very vocal against their concerns and their opposition towards this?
So we've, councillor, thank you for your question. We have had lots of citizens call us in support, and we've had lots of citizens call us in opposition. And a lot of the concerns and opposition, I would tell you, when we talk them and lay out the facts, it changes the conversation. So, when people say to me, "You're in an overlay water protection zone," and you explain to them that about 20% of the city, including the hospital, the cemetery, the golf course, and the college, are all in that same zone, people step back and say, "Oh, I didn't realize that." When you talk to them about our ability to improve the water, groundwater quality in this area, and that we would be required to do that by our local conservation and by DEP, people look at the water quality a little bit differently. When they look at our requirements for storing and maintaining and removing off-site manure, it's a different way of looking at the same exact site from a different lens. The previous site had, we withdrew from the previous site because it had Article 97 concerns, that we didn't want to go through the two- or three-year legal process to figure out whether it was or was not true. We didn't stop because of concern from a group of people. And by the way, I recognize some of the people in the audience from my days at Suffolk Downs. There are some people who are professional in their opposition, and I see that. I also see people in the community that are very sincere, and their concerns about horse safety, water quality, traffic. We want to be the 54th business in this community, because there's a renaissance going on in this community, and there are good things happening here. We would like to be part of that, and we'd like to be in a community that is prepared to work with businesses. We believe that the concerns that have been raised, that we can work through and answer those things. We can, I can answer the water quality and issues that exist there. We met with DEP at your request. DEP is looking forward to seeing our plans, because they know our engineers, they know our team, and they know what we can do to a given site. Same with traffic. You have a problem at this intersection, before we're here, we're going to pump resources into studying and analyzing, looking at it, and trying to figure out what the solution is then. So, I stand before you, councillor, because I believe that John Stephanini, Bay State Racing, and our entity can be good partners with this community to improve and leave this place a little bit better. I don't know about your grandmother, but my nonna told me, "Leave everything you touch a little bit better." We will leave this parcel, this location, better than we find. That's a promise.
Question. Thank you for the presentation. How many communities have you tried to implement a racetrack?
So, I personally, Bay State Racing, this is the first community that Bay State Racing has tried to do. The previous group of people, who were a group of investors, invested a bunch of money to look at it, and they gave up on it. And they gave up on it because the equation to build the track is just too long, and it is very difficult. You're building a one-mile strip, 70 feet wide. I spent a lot of time with the horse community and got to know them, and to believe in them, and to recognize the value the track places on them. That $4 million in purse money flows through the track to those owners. One of, a former client of mine at Suffolk Downs, who's been very active in this, worked with the horse community to do something, and asked me to meet with some investors and some others to talk about it. I did, and I decided to take the project on and to become part of it, because I believe in it. I believe that it can preserve your open space, it can become your largest taxpayer, it can be a good corporate citizen in your community, and can contribute more to the community than what it takes out of the community. So, Bay State itself, this is Bay State's first project. Commonwealth Racing, which was a different group of investors after Suffolk Downs closed. So Suffolk Downs closed. When it closed, there were a bunch of different groups around the state, up on the North Shore, South Shore, Western Mass, different groups of horse owners that started to look at putting a track together. Most of those failed because they couldn't get the investors to come up with the money to build the track. They were horse owners that wanted the track because they wanted the purse money to flow through the track. I brought to the table with Seki Ganger and others, the investors and the resources to be able to make it happen.
Madam President, may I ask another question? Can I ask another question? A follow-up question?
Yes.
So, of the $28 million in capital they plan on investing in at the site, what percentage of that is going to be the track, per se?
So, a big chunk of that will relate to track-related activity. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but it could be $7 or $8 million. A lot of it is things like fencing. You'd be amazed how expensive it is to put in a mile of fence on either side of a track. So there's a lot of money that goes into guardrails and fencing and making a site secure. In addition to that, we will spend money to renovate the existing house, we'll spend money to renovate the existing barns, we'll build a gazebo, we'll deal with mitigation and parking and other issues. The soft costs, the engineering, the legal, the architecture on the site could be 12% of the project. I share that with you because I want you to understand and appreciate that this isn't, you know, someone with a backhoe and a pickup truck. There's an enormous amount of engineering and architecture that's designed, that's going to go into your planning board and into your conservation commission, that's going to lay out what are the options for stormwater management? How are you going to deal with stormwater on the site? How are you going to take that stormwater and ensure that before it finds its way back to the Pearly Brook, which finds its way into the reservoir, which finds its way into Crystal Lake, which finds its way into your water supply, how do we make sure? That's a lot of engineering and a lot of discussion, and there's cost associated.
And I appreciate your response. I just feel, you know, I personally have sat through a lot of timeshare, where you can go on vacation for a week, and you can go to Paris and call up and get it in next week, and then you get the timeshare, and you're like, "Wait a minute, I can't go." So I just feel as though this is a presentation of what is and what could be, and not necessarily realistic expectations.
So councillor, I would say, is everything we've laid out, we're not only committed to do, we have talked with the Assistant City Solicitor about putting into the host community agreement, so that we are required to do. And if your conservation commission isn't stringent enough in looking at the water quality, DEP made clear to us, be prepared to prove to us that you meet the state regulations for Zone A and for the overlay protection district. Those aren't promises, empty or otherwise, those are requirements that a state agency is going to require us to do as part of our permitting process.
That's providing we approve racing.
That's correct, but the point I make to you is, all of the development is controlled by them.
Thank you.
Excuse me, nobody can hear downstairs. It's all echoing. You can't even talk to me. Thank you.
At this time, we are going, as a point of order, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30. We're going to take a brief recess. At 7:30, I'm going to open up the public hearing and recess the public hearing, and then I will go back and open up this current meeting, and we will finish this meeting as the councillors will have their chance to speak. I, again, appreciate everybody's patience, as the meeting, for technical reasons, had to start about 20 minutes late. It is being livestreamed on Channel 8. The glitch did get fixed with the TV station, and so I just wanted to give that information as well. But right now, we are going to recess the meeting. It will reopen after I have reopened and recessed the public hearing, and we will finish this meeting this evening. Once this meeting is finished, we will reopen the public hearing, and we will have the public hearing as scheduled. That is a point of order, and that is something that I am required to do. So as of right now, this meeting is recessed until after 7:30. Thank you.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, there we go.
This is a meeting of the Gardner City Council for the purpose of a public hearing regarding item number 11317. The public hearing notice reads as follows. The advertisement for a public hearing as described above would provide as follows. Pursuant to General Law Chapter 128A, Subsection 13A, the Gardner, the City of Gardner City Council will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, July 23, 2024, at Gardner City Hall in the City Council Chambers, Room 21995 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Massachusetts, 01440, with peri auditorium at Gardner City Hall available as an overflow room should the City Council Chamber reach capacity to hear the matter of Bay State Racing LLC's application for horse racing operation at 827 Green Street and specifically the following vote. Shall a track of land located within the limits of the City of Gardner now opened by the Gamma Incorporated located at 827 Green Street comprising approximately of 114 acres also identified as assessors, lot number R42-211, and more particularly described in Worcester Registry of Deeds Book 63792 and Page 211, and situated on the easterly side of Route 140, otherwise called Green Street, be approved as a location of a running horse racing track where race meetings laid out and conducted by licensees under Mass General Law Chapter 128A will be held or conducted? Anyone wishing to be heard may sign up beginning at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 23, 2024, through the conclusion of the public hearing at the place designated above and also refer to the Gardner City Council Public Hearing Rules and Procedures listed below, adopted March 18, 2013. Interested persons may attend the hearing and give oral comments or they may submit written comments until 4:30 PM on Wednesday, July 24, 2024, by mail or emailing Elizabeth Doran, Assistant City Clerk, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. 01440, e doran@gardner-ma.gov. A copy of the submitted application is available for public review at the City Clerk's Office, Room 121, during the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM on Fridays, or electronically at www.gardner-ma.gov. An informal meeting of the Gardner City Council will be held on Tuesday, July 23, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Gardner City Hall in the City Council Chambers, Room 21995 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. 01440, for a presentation from Bay State Racing LLC on their application as described above, with peri auditorium at Gardner City Hall available as an overflow room. Should the City Council Chamber reach capacity, the informal meeting notice and packet is posted outside the City Clerk's Office and electronically at www.gardner-ma.gov. Gardner City Council Public Hearing Rules and Procedures adopted March 18, 2013. Number one, the City Council President will call the public hearing to order and reallow the public hearing notice. Number two, the City Council President will call upon the petitioner to summarize the proposal. Number three, the City Council President will then ask for anyone wishing to testify to please raise their hand, be recognized, then state their name and address for the record. Number four, comments from any one speaker are limited to three minutes. Number five, testimony must be on the merits of the pending question, otherwise the testimony will be ruled out of order. Number six, the petitioner shall be granted the opportunity to reply to questions and comments if desired. Number seven, modifications to the proposal must be submitted in writing. Number eight, attendees desiring a second opportunity to present new testimony will be given an opportunity if, in the opinion of the presiding officer, time allows. Repetitive testimony will not be permitted. Number nine, the petitioners and persons offering testimony may submit written comments to the City Council President. Number 10, upon completion of testimony, the City Council President shall close or continue the public hearing to a time slash place certain by voice vote. City of Gardner, Elizabeth Doran, Assistant City Clerk. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Corrigan. Counselor Verrill.
Present.
Counselor Carrigan.
Present.
Counselor E.
Present.
Counselor Hagman.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Thibodeau Munoz.
Present.
Counselor Chisom.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
Present Kaczynski.
Present.
Attorney counsel Javi, or four.
The court is present. At this time, I'm going to recess the public hearing as we ran over from the previous informal meeting this evening so we can open up the informal meeting. We will finish the remainder of the informal meeting and close that and then I will reopen the public hearing. The public hearing is now recessed. At this time, I'm going to recess the public hearing as we ran over from the previous informal meeting this evening so we can open up the informal meeting. We will finish the remainder of the informal meeting and close that and then I will reopen the public hearing. The public hearing is now recessed. Should the City Council Chamber reach capacity, the informal meeting notice and packet is posted outside the City Clerk's Office and electronically at www.gardner-ma.gov. Gardner City Council Public Hearing Rules and Procedures adopted March 18, 2013. Number one, the City Council President will call the public hearing to order and reallow the public hearing notice. Number two, the City Council President will call upon the petitioner to summarize the proposal. Number three, the City Council President will then ask for anyone wishing to testify to please raise their hand, be recognized, then state their name and address for the record. Number four, comments from any one speaker are limited to three minutes. Number five, testimony must be on the merits of the pending question, otherwise the testimony will be ruled out of order. Number six, the petitioner shall be granted the opportunity to reply to questions and comments if desired. Number seven, modifications to the proposal must be submitted in writing. Number eight, attendees desiring a second opportunity to present new testimony will be given an opportunity if, in the opinion of the presiding officer, time allows. Repetitive testimony will not be permitted. Number nine, the petitioners and persons offering testimony may submit written comments to the City Council President. Number 10, upon completion of testimony, the City Council President shall close or continue the public hearing to a time slash place certain by voice vote. City of Gardner, Elizabeth Doran, Assistant City Clerk. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Corrigan. Counselor Verrill.
Present.
Counselor Carrigan.
Present.
Counselor E.
Present.
Counselor Hagman.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Thibodeau Munoz.
Present.
Counselor Chisom.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
Present Kaczynski.
Present.
Attorney counsel Javi, or four.
The court is present. At this time, I'm going to recess the public hearing as we ran over from the previous informal meeting this evening so we can open up the informal meeting. We will finish the remainder of the informal meeting and close that and then I will reopen the public hearing. The public hearing is now recessed. The informal meeting is now called back to order. We will continue with the questions from the councilors to the petitioner. The councilors. Counselor Thibodeau Munoz.
Thank you, Madam President.
Folks, please silence your phones if you can. Please be sure to turn them off if you can't silence them. Thank you. Counselor Thibodeau Munoz.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is what is the minimum number of thoroughbreds necessary to hold a race? What happens to the track and land if Bay State fails and is unable to arrange races at all to not being able to commit to the number of thoroughbreds necessary to have a race? What happens to the gaming license also?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. To conduct a race, a race is usually somewhere between six and 10 horses. Usually you have a race week that has between eight and 10 races. So over the course of a weekend, you need 100 horses that would come to the facility, 150 horses that would come to the facility, depending on how many races, how competitive and the like. And as I said to you, one of the challenges in Massachusetts today is there are not a lot of horses, so it will take time for that population to grow as the foals populate. Your second question, which is what happens if we're not successful? We have a high degree of confidence we will be successful, in part because we have a large organized group of horse owners and horse breeders behind us and we have the Commonwealth invested in making the purse money and the revenue to make that happen. If this entity at some point, three years, 10 years, 30 years, ceases to race, as is the case, then the track will return to a horse farm. It's zoned, it can be used for what it is zoned for and is currently, the site is perked, which I know is a question I'm sure we'll get to at some point. You're not going to build a bunch of houses on the site, you're not going to build commercial on the site, there's no water and sewer directed to the site. So this site is going to restore, return to some sort of residential agricultural horse farm use.
Thank you. Second question. Thank you, Madam President. You've received a letter of support from the AFL-CIO president. I assume that this means that you're required to hire union contractors to construct the track and the land, but what about the 25, 15 to 25 staffers that are going to be there year-round? Will they be union? Will there be a pathway for the 100 or so temp workers to be, to full-time employment and what will their wages be like?
All good questions, thank you. We're committed to using organized labor as part of our process. Every project I've done in my 35-year career has been a union project. You have trained, professional, safe workers. We've met with the population of workers in this community and there is a large number of workers in this community and there are contractors that service this area, so we feel very confident we can locally source and pay prevailing wages, meaning we're paying life-sustaining wages to our workers. In terms of the five to 25, they're not likely to be union workers, in part because they're going to be people who do things that are not traditionally in a union, particular union bucket, and we would hope that people who come here to work on a temporary basis would become permanent employees. We would hope that people who are interns here from the community college or from UMass Stockbridge would find their way into the pipeline, not only to work here, but to work for one of the horse farms around the Commonwealth that wants to do that. If you're a vet tech student at the Mount and you come to our facility and you get paid to work there on a part-time basis as a student or whatever else, you may very well find yourself working there or you may find yourself meeting one of our horse owners, and I use John Assamacopoulos, I've used his name, so I'll stick with him. You may find that you want to work at John Assamacopoulos Farm in Pittsburgh and work as part of the training that occurs there. So we'll hopefully find people pathways to work there. You'll also see a growth in small businesses in the area, like blacksmiths. There's a husband and wife that were the blacksmiths at Suffolk Downs. There are some in the area, they'll probably have to take apprentices on. They won't work onsite, but they'll come to the site on a regular basis as part of it and there'll be a fee for service. Same with veterinarians, same with other folks who provide certain services that are unique and specific. We'll grow their business as part of that. And if I could, I'd just like to answer a previous question that I didn't answer completely because I heard it a little bit differently. The Bay State Racing, this is their first project in Massachusetts. It's the investors' first project in this. Commonwealth Racing, which I was associated with as an attorney, Commonwealth Racing looked at Sturbridge and Hardwick. Those were different projects and I'm happy to talk about both of those projects, but Bay State as a entity was not involved with either of them, nor were their investors. Did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
It's okay. Counselor, do you have any more, further questions?
I do, but I have just one follow-up, just because you mentioned Mount Weychus, a community college a few times and I worked there. I'm just wondering who you've talked to specifically at the Mount.
So we've met at least, I think, three times with the president, with the head of the dean and the director of the veterinary tech program and a couple of others. One of the positions has changed in the time we first started meeting and talking with them and we've talked with them about the kind of collaboration we could do with large animals. One of the things they've asked us to consider on the site is to keep, to continue to keep chickens on the site because part of the vet tech program they have there involves chickens and they would like to, in addition to large animals, horses, have chickens and we have agreed to do that.
Counselor, any further?
Could I ask more questions?
Let's go to some others.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to me, come back to me, yeah.
Is there any other counselors? Counselor Hagman?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Stefanini, for your time and trying to answer our questions. I do have a couple of quick questions with some small, multiple parts to them. It was my amendment to our original that led to the DEP meeting, so thank you for having that meeting in such a timely fashion. Would you just quickly mind summarizing any of the changes that are going to come about as a result of that meeting? Would your initial HCA be updated to reflect that and is that something we get to see?
Those are great questions, thank you, and thank you for encouraging us to go see DEP. I think it was very productive and helpful, not only to us but to the community, to see that someone is looking over and watching to see what that is. And as a footnote, I personally, having served where you sit and having served in the legislature and have worked as an attorney and as a government professional, I take your comments seriously. Something's important to you, it's important to us and we're going to figure out how we can answer your question. So relative to DEP, I think we learned, I don't know that we learned a lot because we have experts that deal with DEP. When we walked into the room, the DEP professionals recognized the licensed professionals who were with us. So it's not like we're walking into the room with strangers, we're walking into the room with people that they recognize as experts in their given area. It was a good review for me of the rules and regulations of the process that we need to go through and some of the safeguards we need to look at. There are some very specific things that we are going to need to do on this site to make sure that we are, as the director of DEP said, providing a top-notch stormwater management. That means we're going to have to have our engineers work and design and we're going to have to construct swales and rain gardens and the like so that the water before it leaves the site goes through some kind of treatment. That's an improvement over where it is today. We're also going to have to deal with manure, which is going to have to be collected, contained in some kind of building like what I showed you and it's going to have to be removed off-site. That's an improvement over most horse farms in Massachusetts because they're not required to follow that necessarily. In addition to that, I didn't talk about, and I intended to, talk about fertilizer. We are a track that's going to be used one or two weekends a year. We're not a golf course with a putting green. It has to be fertilized constantly and watered constantly. In addition to that, we're heavily regulated and we will use only what is required and needed and we'll use organic fertilizers at a minimum and we will not store fertilizer on the site. So you will not run into an issue with regulations that are concerned about the storage of fertilizer. We've agreed to put that with your solicitor into the host community agreement. In addition to that, we have agreed to put the requirements for Zone A, both the prohibitions and the things that are permitted through certain processes, all in the host community agreement. It doesn't make them any more legally enforceable, but it puts it in one document, clear in front of us and it gives the community an added enforcement mechanism through contract. So we're committed, when I stand in front of you and I say something, we're prepared to sign a document that says we'll do that.
Thank you. And my other just quick question for- And my other just quick question for you, similar to this, I guess. Traffic's obviously come up a lot, it's a concern for all of us. If the study, you know, if and when we, if and when we get any studies and they do find that, say, we need to add traffic lights or something, do we know who is on the hook for that? Is it the city, is it your organization? And are there other studies? You know, you had mentioned that your organization would help pay for an independent study, so is there anything else that hasn't been mentioned that, you know, might be looked at or be an option for us to get your help on, should we even get to that point for studies?
Sure. So, the normal process for developments or development like this is you get the use approved. So if we were a restaurant, you'd go to the council, get the zoning approved, and then you would go to the planning board, Conservation Commission, for their approvals. In this instance, we've committed to go to the planning board to do a full-blown traffic study. It might cost us $250,000. Is that a fair number, Rob? And it'll take us a few months to go out, and they will, Rob Najee, who is with VHB, who is a professional in this area, we will study all the traffic in that area, we'll go to the planning board before we do the study and say, here's the study we want to do. Sorry for my bad. And then we'll go and we'll conduct the study. After we conduct, as we conduct the study, the city will hire, at its choice, a peer review firm. So you hire a different engineering firm that works for the planning board for the city, and they will review the work that goes forward. It's a very typical process, and one will do the study, look at the methodology, look at the study, and then come back, and then we'll look at what are the conclusions that we need to address, deal with. Is it a race day situation where we need to have a police officer in a given area, or we have to change a traffic pattern? Do we need traffic lights? Do we have to do it? We are on the hook for any improvements that are relative to what we need to do to operate our facility. And we are comfortable and confident in terms of roadway. Part of selecting this site, and you were asking earlier about the selection of the site, Counselor, part of that selection is, it's on 140, which is directly off of Route 2. We don't have to go through, we look at other sites in Pittsburgh and Lamonster and other places, where you had to get to a farm that maybe had some attributes that were different, but it didn't have the kind of access that off of 140 this site has, and the kind of So that plays a role in terms of site selection. And I spoke with Senator Brewer, who when he was Chair of Ways and Means, had worked on the reconstruction of that roadway. Because I asked him one day, I saw him, why is this roadway constructed to this level? He said, well, I was chair of the Budget Committee. So you had some influence with your senator, obviously. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Further questions, comments? Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Madam President. I've got like a couple or three questions that are, I'm looking for an answer and then another question to follow up on it, if I may. You've talked about approximately $500,000 in revenue coming to the city. And I always like revenue coming to the city. And it's two parts, as I understand it. There's $230,000, which is coming as a pilot, and that, to me, is pretty straightforward because it's in lieu of property tax, real estate tax. $230,000 would be about $15 million in value on the property. You're talking about investing $25 million in the property, so it kind of all makes sense, and a pilot would be money that we negotiate and comes right into the city. So that's $230,000. The other payment is $240,000. Now, I'm not going to quibble over the fact that 230 and 240 equals $470,000 and not $500,000. What I am struggling with on the $240,000, it says it's a percent and a half of simulcast revenue. So is that additional money you would be paying, or does the statute require you to pay it?
So that's a great question. First of all, there are, the $500,000 is an estimate based on you also getting revenue associated with other taxes that occur in the community. But if you notice, I can't lift my right arm above this, it's because the assistant solicitor, I think, has broken it, and he's convinced me that the 240 should not be treated like a pilot payment, and we should be committing that to the community as part of that, rather than the vagaries of a statute that has changed a few times. And we have agreed that we will treat it in that fashion. We haven't worked all the language out on it, but we will come forward and we will put the revenue to make sure that it's there and it's clear. That's, that reference in that statute has changed a couple of times, and it requires a change in the local aid formula. If it does, great, we'll figure out an offset to deal with that. But we're committed to that revenue and guaranteeing it. And, so I'll stop there.
All right. And that, you know, I guess the second part of my question, it, the host agreement talks about coming through state aid, and so my question there was, is this like coming, if it's a required payment, is it coming to us like meals tax or the local option hotel tax, or is it coming through the unrestricted general government assistance?
So the answer is, it would be, it doesn't exist today. So we've agreed to pay what is not in the statute today, which was in the statute. And to the first part of your question, the valuation of this site would not be $25 million or $28 million based on that. The value of the site, Walmart spent more than that building the site, it's based on income and what you look at in the site.
I understand that. I don't have a problem with you investing $25 and the value is 15. That's how it works, how the assessors work.
So we would look at that. In addition to that, the mayor and the solicitor have asked us to look at an escalator as part of that. And we've agreed on an escalator, correct me if you think otherwise, that would be equal to whatever the tax levy changes in a given year. So if the average taxpayer is going up 2.5%, we would go up 2.5%. If the average taxpayer is getting no increase, we would get no increase. If it's a 1% increase, we'd get a 1% increase. So we would travel the same exact way that every other taxpayer in the community would travel, except that we would start with a larger base.
Okay. And the two-
So that language, just to be clear, the language that you're looking at in there won't be in the final version, because we'll guarantee those dollars.
Okay. And the $240,000, which is the 1.5% of simulcast revenue, when would you expect that that money would start to flow to the city? Would it be immediately, or is it in a year, or two years, or five years?
It would flow in the first fiscal year in which we are in business, that we open.
Which, and when would you expect that to be?
So, our timelines have been thrown back because our process has delayed. We initially thought we would race in November of '25, and we may be able to, depending on whether we can make time up in permitting and construction, there may be some things that we can do after we acquire the site that don't require us to go through the process. So for example, if we purchase the site from Gama and we want to renovate the house that we own, we go and apply for a building permit, we don't have to go through site plan review or conservation to do that. So some of the things that we need to do, we may be able to get some time that happens on. If we cannot race in November of '25, the next race, race day would probably be in the late spring of '26, which would be like May-June, which is still in the fiscal year of-
Fiscal '26.
'26. So the first payment to the city would be in fiscal '26. And every year that the facility is opened and licensed, that payment would be due and payable to the city.
Okay. And that would be for one weekend of racing, or two weekends, or three?
Correct. Because as I went through in our economic model, we're not making money off of the weekend racing. We're losing money.
You're losing money on every race.
Which is hard for folks to comprehend. Our revenue is coming from outside of Gardner. But because of the racetrack in Gardner, which is dispersing the $4 million to horse farms, it's enabling us to have, under state law, the privilege to receive a small percentage of those wages that occur around the country. So that's our revenue stream.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor General Outts?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. On Counselor Brooks' point, the 1.5% of the simulcast fees, that was the $240,000 that was in the agreement?
Correct.
So is that now the floor? And if the 1.5% is higher than that in the future, the city gets more?
So the 1.5% is no longer in the statute.
Okay.
And there is a local aid, the communities that were receiving dollars, that was transferred into their local aid account, which has happened in the last couple of years, which I have to say is quite smart on their part, because they can see them losing that revenue. So they've built it into their local aid so that they continue to get that revenue, even though they won't have a track that will be there. So they won't lose that money. And to make it easy, rather than going through a formula that everyone doesn't understand with revenue that can fluctuate, we've agreed to, in essence, because we haven't finalized the way we look at it, treat it as a larger pilot payment, so that there is guarantee. So if you want to do RANs, Revenue Anticipation Notes, because you want to use it for a particular purpose, then as a pilot payment, you can then use the contract and the payment as a means of then going and using the dollars. You can't do that when it's 1.5% of something.
Gotcha.
And it would grow each and every year based on whatever the-
Tax rate.
Tax rate was.
Couple more questions, if you don't mind. Quick one on the DEP, the enforcement. How often do they come out and review the site to make sure the water, you know, is being treated correctly, the manure is being removed? Is there a timetable for them? They come out every month, every week?
So when you're doing a project, they review the project thoroughly, and they review it, and then you have to get a completion certificate, the water quality certificate, and you do the same with the Conservation Commission. I don't know that they have a schedule for review, but they have the ability to review it at any time. I see the engineers nodding yes. So, just like your Conservation Commission, if there's not an order of conditions that exists, once it's satisfied, you then have to continue to satisfy that order, and they can inspect it as they choose.
But there's no set inspection timetable, that they come out even once a year?
Nope. But I will tell you this, from talking to the director and the deputy director, if a counselor or the city writes them a note and says, can you please go look at this? They seem to be very constituent-oriented, and they'll send someone out, and they'll come take a look at it.
And one last quick question. You mentioned non-horse racing and non-horse-related events there, weddings, festivals. With it being zoned agricultural, and that being the horse racing aspect fitting into, I guess a carve-out, if you will, in the agricultural section, would there be able to be non-horse-related events on the site, ever?
So, that's a great question. I think we'd have to look at that. We were asked to look at whether we would sponsor an event once a year, at least, for a local team or charity or something else, and we're happy to do that. If the city wants to tell us we can't do it, then, sorry, team, charity, we can't do it. But that's not our primary piece of it, that was something that we were asked to look at as part of it, and I guess we'll just have to look and figure out whether a non-agricultural related event fits within the zoning there. And I don't know, I don't have an answer to that question. But we'll look at it, and we'll try to find an answer for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Tivoli?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few, the questions, earlier, I was just looking at my notes, when I asked about how many horses would need, how many thoroughbreds would be needed for a race, you said eight to 10, and then you said there would be 150 horses on site during a race weekend. How many races are there that there would need to be 150 horses?
So I said six to 10. So a race would have six to 10 horses in it, and a race card would have eight to 10 races on it. So there could be eight to 10 races in a day, there could be six to 10 horses in a race, and you could have a variable of horses. You can do the multiplication and figure out over three days, if every horse runs one race, every horse runs two races, how that all fits into the math of that. And it will vary based on how popular the race is, the conditions, the volume of horses. And so if you had a lot of volume of horses, you'll have a lot of races that have 10 horses in it. If you have a small, you could have a whole lot of races that have six horses in it. So it's a range, and I was not, I was trying to give you a sense of magnitude, not a sense of precision.
Just one quick last thing. There's a lot of wooded area in that area, I'm just wondering how much of that wooded area you're estimating would be clear-cut to build the racetrack and the parking lots?
So the parking lot would go into the area that's open now, so there's no trees associated with that, at least I don't believe there are. The wooded area that's in the back, we're talking about a 70-foot strip being built into the wooded area around the hill. You will not be able to see the race, other than by cameras, from the start-finish line on the other side of the track, because it's on the other side of a hill. I don't see why we would remove the trees that are on that part of it. We will remove the trees where there will be, like you have on one of your slides, the amphitheater, they will remove trees there. It may be, the architects have shown us a couple of different examples, it may be that we end up keeping some trees in that area as a canopy for those, and it depends on what they see. I've walked the site a few times in that area, and there are some significant trees, there are a lot of less significant trees. And so, if they encounter a large oak, they may be inclined to figure out, how do we keep this tree and make it part of our canopy for what goes in there? If it is less significant, so term, but that's a site-related issue. We have, the mayor has asked us about this through the solicitor. We've agreed to plant more trees, 500 trees throughout the community as part of our effort to replace trees.
Further questions, comments from the counselors? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, I just want to state the reason for my initial question and the reason why I was unsatisfied with it, because I received an email from a constituent, and I think the rest of the council did on July 12th, from a former city counselor, James Walsh, with the information from the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website that Bay State Racing only has one individual named for all roles with the company. So that's why I was trying to find out more information about the company's structure and operational aspects of its business. And I noticed, we received an email today, actually, from former city councillor Walsh as well, that he had sent an email to the contact information for Bay State Racing on July 15th and hasn't received a response, so he had one constituent to respond to as well. But my question is, my second question is, what is the definition of fully operational for the host community agreement? And it's pertinent to the location, because we are talking about, you know, 2,000 to 5,000 individuals coming to Gardner for the site. Is fully operational one race weekend of three days? And are all the studies and reports and figures based on three race days, one weekend? Or is it based on 20 race days, six to seven weekends? Because that, I mean, we live in New England, right? That's the entirety of our summer potentially that we could have this impact to the community, unless you're going to race in the winter.
No.
Right.
So, thank you, Counsel, for your question. First, I would say, if you can forward to us Counselor Walsh's email to us, we have responded to each and every email that we received. And I have reviewed, and we've gone through that, and there have been dozens and dozens and dozens of them, and we have not missed an email. So if an email, if it was sent to the wrong address or whatever, send it to us, we'll respond to it, we respond to everything we get. In terms of our corporate filings, it's very typical, if you know attorneys, when you do corporate filings, you have a lead investor, and the lead investor is the person who is the person responsible for the entity. I'm not listed on the LLC, although I do have a small piece of the LLC. And when we go to the Gaming Commission, they will look at all of our sources of financing, including traditional financing like banks and hedge fund or whatever, whatever source of funding we have. So there will be review of the corporate structure and entity as we proceed. And your last point was-
What is the definition of fully operational, the host community?
So, my arm is still not working all correctly. Your assistant solicitor raised that issue with us, as you raised it appropriately, and we've agreed to take that language out. The language that, it was not put in there to be unclear, it was put in there to mean the point that Counselor made, which is, when do we start our payments? We start our payments in the year we're operational. So, we've taken that language out and made clear that when we're operational, that is when it starts. So it's not fully operational to be defined, or, you know, how many days, or whatever it is, when we're operational. And operational is a race, that's one race. So that year we're, we're doing.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yeah. In regards to the one, two, or three races throughout the course of the year, then, during your presentation, you stated no more than 20 days. How does that correlate? If we're talking about three race days, one, two, or three, the multiple, at best, I figured it could be 16. Where does the 20 come into play?
So, the most you'd have in three weekends would be nine days. There is a state statute that sets as a goal from the legislature that we race 20 days a year. We have gone to the Racing Commission and told them that's an unrealistic goal. The horse community has likewise done the same thing, and it has a waiver provision in it, which has been used- in it, which has been used in the past, and we would ask for a waiver again. We, in our host community agreement, lay out the number of weekends that we will ask for in the first five years, and we lay out that we will come to you and tell you before we go to the Gaming Commission and ask them for race days. So we're trying to be transparent and clear in terms of race days, but at the same time, the Gaming Commission is going to ask us as one of their questions, "Why can't you run 20 days?" And the answer to that question is, there are not enough horses, there's not enough purses, and it is too expensive. $4 million is enough to have a good weekend of racing for purposes of the horse community. We might be able to stretch it into two weekends, which would be, we think, would be good, one in the spring and one in the fall. Getting beyond that seems very difficult to achieve, if at all, based on the purses that are available, which is a fund that comes from the state, and it's not growing, it's remaining steady. And number two, the number of horses that exist in the community. So I don't see us getting beyond that. I say that because legally, we need to go to the Gaming Commission, because the number of race days is their prerogative. So I can't tell them I've entered into an agreement that says, "I'm only going to do two days," because I have to go to them and I have to ask them to give us a waiver for that. We've entered into a contract with you which lays out those weekends.
Thank you.
Do any of the counselors have anything further to comment or question? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not really familiar with the horse racing world. It's not my nature to know anything about it. The only horse racing I've done is at a carnival or Six Flags, squirting the water in the thing. And to be honest with you, my six-year-old beat me last week, but we won't talk about that, I think she cheated. But how much water is used at the horse races? The reason why I ask that is because every May, June, we're in a water drought, April, maybe, I don't remember, and I can't even water my lawn. So how much water is used? And will it affect us? Do you use our water? Are the water trucks that come up to wash the tracks things the same?
So we will be required to apply for a well. We'll be required to put an artesian well in on the site, and that well will service the property. There is a well currently on the site, but it is on the other side of the property, and we would likely put one on the other side of the property so we could service it. We're not talking about watering this like a golf course. We're talking about when these are, the grass is first starting, we're going to water it. We may water it in and around a race weekend, but other than that, Mother Nature is going to provide water for the track.
All right. And then, as I may, and then when we have those droughted springs, summers, or when we're not at full capacity on our city water, what do we do then?
We'll have to take, if we don't have any water, we'll have to take and get a truck and go get a truckload of water from someplace we can get it and cart it into the area. There are steeplechases or other races that go on in the, in a wooded area, and they bring in water in the truck. So the answer is, can we get a water truck and fill the water truck with water from someplace where we can purchase water? Yeah. But we'll follow whatever it is that's required of us.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further comments, questions from the City Council? Any further questions from the City Council? Thank you, Mr. Stephanini. Appreciate it. There's nothing further from the council at this time on the topic of the informal Then, as I said earlier this evening, this is just a housekeeping measure. I'd asked if anyone was recording the meeting in Perry Auditorium, Brandon Huey of Eight Grace Court, and also Steve Wendell from WGAW recording the meeting. And then also, as I also said earlier this evening, there is no vote this evening on this item. However, as with any informal meeting, a regular practice is for the council to take a straw vote, and for the public, there is a straw vote that, again, is a regular practice of City Council informal meetings. It is an unofficial vote that is conducted as a test of an opinion to get a sense of where the council stands on an item, and I'm going to propose that we take a straw So the topic, on the topic of the meeting, the topic of the meeting is item number 11317, a vote to determine if a track of land located at 827 Green Street be approved as a location of a running horse racing track where race meetings laid out and conducted by licensees under mass general law, Chapter 128A, will be held or conducted. So a yes on the straw vote is that you would allow for there to be horse racing, and a no on the straw vote would be that you would not allow for there to be horse racing. Again, this is unofficial, this is just to get a sense of the council. Counselor Brooks?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Because this is a straw vote, are we required to vote, or may we abstain?
You could abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the council on the straw vote? Counselor Brooks?
No.
Counselor Hudlin?
No.
Counselor Tibo Munoz?
No.
Counselor Heath?
No.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Darnell Owitz?
No.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tisoni?
No.
Counselor Harden?
No.
And I also vote no. That would be 10 no's as a straw vote unofficially on this vote this evening to get a sense of the council. One last time, anything further to comment or questions from the council? Thank you to the representatives from Bay State Racing. We appreciate your presentation, if you being here this evening, answering our questions and providing information to us. Hearing nothing further, the meeting stands adjourned, and the public hearing, which was scheduled for 7:30, which, again, we went over, we had technical difficulties, appreciating everybody's patience for a long evening here, but thank you for allowing us to conduct city business as we are elected to do so. We will begin the public hearing at 8:30, and everyone who is here to be back in this room, we will begin again at 8:30, so please take the time to do what you do, you need to do now. Thank you. to order. We previously read the public hearing notice, we previously took the roll call, there is a quorum present as stated by the clerk. At this time, I will request a summary of the proposal from the petitioner, Bay State Racing LLC. We had an informal meeting earlier this evening for the public watching, and the informal meeting earlier this evening was also on item number 11317. Mr. Stephanini, you can come forward, you can use the microphone right here.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, my name is John Stephanini, and on behalf of the owners, investors, the various groups here this evening, the Mass Breeders Association, the New England Horse Owners Association, thank you for the opportunity, Madam President, counselors, City of Gardner to be heard and to give a presentation. I won't go through the same presentation that I did before, but just quickly, if I could, skip ahead. Community process, we start the community process with a discussion of use, which is why we're here. After we go through that, we would need to get and execute and negotiate a host community agreement with the mayor. We then have to go to the Gaming Commission and go through that process of applying. Then, if we're fortunate, we would go to the Gardner Conservation Commission and Planning Board for purposes of review of parking and wetlands and the like, and when that's done, we would have to go to the Department of Environmental Protection for a water quality certificate to ensure compliance with all rules and regulations. We would then go through the building process, and then we would become operational. Our vision, to continue the breeding, training, racing that has occurred on this site from 1875, started by Dr. Andrews, and to expand it to cover thoroughbred racing in addition, in replacement of standardbreds, which is the existing track that is there today. The track site itself, about a third or half of the site is covered under Zone A and Water Protection, which has heightened regulations. On the right side of the site, you see the Pearly Brook just off the east side of the site. The west side of the site is where the racetrack would be located around the hill and the uplands that are there. There would be stands that would be built into the hill that would be a grass amphitheater. The track itself, 70 feet wide, would be a one-mile strip. It would be turf. We would race one, two, three weekends a year, and when we're not racing, the site would be used for retirement program for horses, a breeding program for thoroughbreds. Next slide. Community partnerships, we have talked with, about collaborating with GAMA on therapy and treatment, dealing with local educational facilities in terms of collaborating with their student programs on vet tech and animal programs, promoting and working with local businesses to grow their businesses as they exist on the site, and contributing annually to local nonprofits to grow organizations that make a difference in the community. We would instantly be the largest taxpayer in the community at 500, approximately $500,000 a year, which would escalate over time. That would make us two and a half times the largest taxpayer in the community today. In addition to that, we will collaborate as a member of the Chamber of the Regional Tourism Bureau with local businesses to make sure that our customers, our facility is using local businesses. We would invest $25 million in new capital in the site to construct and modernize the facility that exists there, to improve the stormwater management that exists on-site. We would create 15 to 25 permanent jobs and 100 temporary jobs, and we would agree to plant 500 trees throughout the community. We would preserve the open space and connect to the North Central Pathway. Next slide. In addition, I will support local agriculture, that's local farms that hay and do other things. Keep going. Just a couple of Q and A, just to touch upon, which I touched on before. Wetlands and water protection, we will be required to collect, maintain in a covered facility and move off-site manure. We will improve the rainwater, groundwater runoff on the site. The DEP Director, when we met with her, said this site would benefit from top-of-the-line stormwater management, and we are committed with the engineering firms we have to designing and building a top-of-the-line stormwater management so the water quality in this site is improved. Horse welfare, I'll leave that to the horse owners to talk about as they go forward, but Massachusetts has always been a leader in horse safety and horse treatment, leading the nation in anti-doping and anti-slaughter provisions. In addition to that, the site will have a 24/7 security on the site, and we will be subject to new regulation from the new federal entity created, HISA, the Horse Integrity Safety Authority. Traffic, we're fortunate to be on 140, which is a relatively recently upgraded roadway. In addition to that, we will do a full traffic study, and we're committed to paying for the mitigation associated with the use of the facility, including state and local police officers and other forms of mitigation. This tells you a little bit about our business model. While we break even in breeding and retirement programs and we lose money in racing operations, we generate our money on cell phones, people who wager off-site, people who wager all over the Commonwealth on races that occur all over the country. We get a small piece of that as a condition of our license. The wagering on this site will only be on race days, those one, two, or three weekends a year. You'll never be able to wager on a sports wagering facility, a Red Sox game, a Patriots game, and the like. We'll generate our revenue from that wagering out of state, and we will spend that money in the community as part of our business. Thank you. We look forward to answering your questions, and as the questions, I'll get up towards the end and answer questions that have been asked of us.
Thank you. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone in here recording tonight's meeting? Yep, can you just state your name? If you can actually come over this microphone this time, state your name and the organization, please.
I'm with WBZ in Boston. It's 1170 Soldiers Field Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else recording the meeting? If there is anyone in Perry Auditorium recording the meeting, you can head over to the table over on the right, near the exit. Brandy is there, and you can give her your name and address for the record or your organization for the record, and I will announce that as I receive it. We will begin in a moment with the first person who has signed up to offer testimony this evening. First, I would like to acknowledge some procedural matters to ensure that each person has a fair and has a fair opportunity to testify this evening. Each person was given a card with a number on it when they signed up to offer testimony. We consider this card to be your ticket and to keep it with you. You will be asked to provide it at the City Council Chamber when it is your turn to offer testimony. I will call each person by name and card number when their turn to offer testimony approaches. If you're seated in Perry Auditorium at that time, when I state that your turn to offer testimony is approaching, I'll call your name and card number. You'll exit Perry Auditorium through the door to the right of the stage and go to the council chamber. When you arrive at the council chamber, you will be seated to wait for your turn to offer testimony, if you are seated in the council chamber at that time. When it is your turn to offer testimony, I will call your name and card number, at which time you will go to the podium in the council chamber. When you arrive at the podium, you can begin your testimony by stating your name and address for the record and then offer your testimony. Each person has three minutes maximum to offer their testimony. There is a timer right on the laptop in front of the assistant clerk, where you will be able to see where you are for time, and she will be keeping the time. And after you have offered your testimony, you will either exit the council chamber to go back to Perry Auditorium or to be seated here, if that's where you were sitting, and then the next person will be called to offer their testimony. If you lose your number or you can't remember your number, you can visit the clerk in the hallway outside the chamber, or if you were in Perry Auditorium, you can head over to the clerk who is located next to the exit on the right of the stage outside the chamber. That is in all of the information that you're handed this evening when you signed up, but I did want to make it clear this evening that I will be calling people to come up. We have plenty of staff here to help people be directed to the council chamber and to offer their- offer their testimony, and it is our goal to offer a fair, professional, and timely public hearing this evening to be sure everybody is heard. So with that, we're going to begin with numbers one through 10. Number one, Michael Nicholson. Number two, Phil Broder. Number three, Bruce Spuria. There is no number four. Number five, Gerald St. Elair. Number six, Dorothy LeBlanc. Number seven, Russell LeBlanc. Number eight, Deborah Alley. And there is no number nine. Number 10, Carla Wadzikiewicz. And number 11, Bruce Chester. So first, if you are in any of those numbers and you're in Perry Auditorium, please head up to the council chamber. If you are here this evening, we will begin. Number one, Michael Nicholson.
Thank you very much, Madam President and councilors, for the opportunity to speak to you here this evening. I'd also like to thank the many residents who reached out to my office, who expressed their concerns, their support, their objections to this project one way or the other. The administration has submitted over 120 pages to the city council in the last month, so I'd like to keep my comments focused on certain other aspects of the proposal, the impacts to the city, and information that residents have reached out to my office and asked questions on. I think one of the things that Gardner's been making a large concerted effort in lately is making sure that we are a more business-friendly community, not by saying yes to every business that walks in the door, but allowing a process to take place in which we work with and sit down with anyone who's interested in coming to Gardner and calling Gardner their home, be it a home for a resident or a home for a business, and making it so that we are a community that's willing to work with people and see what impact and symbiotic relationship we can have with each other in that process. The question's been asked by my, to my office from several councilors and members of the public as well, too. What does the $500,000 that has been proposed to the city on an annual basis mean, and how does that relate to what we can do here? I would certainly not be opposed, and it's something that if the council chooses to move forward with something, we would certainly be willing to work with on a special revenue account for that fund that has been suggested by some of the councilors. $500,000 a year equates to about 100,000 homes that we have here in Gardner with the average home right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can you please turn off your cell phones and silence your cell phones, folks? Thank you.
Thank you. So to answer the question that was asked, what does $500,000 mean in terms of what revenue is for the city? That's about 100,000 homes with the average home in Gardner right now paying around $4,500 a year in taxes. So certainly a special revenue fund for special projects, capital projects, certain things like that could be put forward. In terms of working with businesses who are willing to come here, again, it's something that we've made a highlight of my administration and the city as a whole in making sure people know that Gardner's a place to be welcomed, be open for business. But things still have to be vetted, and processes still have to be followed, and input from the public absolutely taken into consideration. And I think that's what we've seen here this evening. I think that's what we've seen throughout this process, that if there's a process outlined so that people get a chance to voice their concerns, people get a chance to talk about what they feel like, and businesses to make their pitch for the city, that's exactly how things should work and what we've given the opportunity for today. Again, as I've said earlier, as I see the time is running short now, there is 120 pages of information in your packet that's already been submitted, as well as correspondence for myself here. And if there's any further questions in between now and the next city council meeting on August 5th, if that's when the council chooses to vote, my office is always ready to be reached out to and answer any questions that may arise along the way from any of the residents in the city and any of councilors. Again, with my email at mayor@gardner-ma.gov or at 978-630-1490, we'll happy to get all that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Number two, Phil Broder. Folks, I also want to remind you as well, I should have said it at the beginning, just be sure to speak directly into the microphone, just to be sure that the recording picks it up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phil Broder. I live at 182 Willis Road, and I've been around this town for about 70 years now. For the record, I am opposed to a horse racing facility and gambling at 827 Green Street. As I'm sure you're all aware, there are a number of communities in Mass. that have turned down horse racing proposals, and there are valid reasons for each of those communities. Gardner has issues with significantly greater environmental impact. I will briefly summarize my main items of concern as it relates to the proposed operation. One is water quality. Pearly Brook, which borders this property, feeds the city's primary drinking water supply and is a significant concern. The size and scope of the proposed facility only make matters worse. It is a known fact that once the water supply is compromised, it may never be reclaimed. This is a significant issue. Traffic, we've all talked about the traffic tonight. Route 140 Green Street is already a very busy road with a considerable accident and death rate. Enough said. Zoning change, a significant change of operation from what we've seen for the last number of years at the LeBlanc Farms and with GAMA. I'd be very interested to see what, you know, what, how this gets approved and what happens going forward. Another sore spot for me is, you know, everybody's talked about the horses and how well they're treated. I think, I think overall, the ethical treatment of the animals is still a question in my mind. The reports of abuse seem to come from reputable sources, and I believe concerns are well-founded. Overall, I do not believe that this proposal has been properly vetted. We all know that lack of appropriate project analysis usually winds up costing the taxpayers. Approval of this proposal will have disastrous results for the present community and future generations. To reiterate my position, I oppose any changes that will allow horse racing and gambling at 827 Green Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, Bruce Spuria. Just want to take, make a quick announcement. The meeting is being recorded in Perry Auditorium by Brandon Huey at 5 Grace Court in Gardner and Ayesha Coaksom of 243 Waterford Street in Gardner. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Spuria. I live at 64 Wheeler Street, Gardner. My concerns are, number one, the water. And nothing against any of the city council, but I don't believe that any of you have put footprints on the ground up there. It is a lot of wetlands, so there is no way that they're telling you what they're doing is going to let that not be polluted. There's no way. Secondly, everybody's talking about the traffic on 140. It's been my experience from a kid growing up, whenever there is an event somewhere, nobody wants to be shuttled in. Everybody will be parking on Stone Street, parking on the neighbors' lawns, us all calling the police, having cars removed, and that's going to cost the city more money. Otherwise, excuse me. The other thing is that seven other communities in this state have turned these people down. So Gardner, do the same. Tell them to giddy up and go back to Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no number four.
This mic here? Gerald St. Elair, 39 High Street, South Gardner. Madam President, members of the council, the primary duty and responsibility for elected officials in a small city like Gardner, and that includes the mayor and the council. The number-one responsibility is to ensure the public health and the public safety of its residents. Everything else is secondary. If you don't have good health and safety, the rest of it doesn't matter. The basic foundation for a community like Gardner's public health is to have a robust public water system that supplies adequate quantity and quality of water to meet the basic needs of its citizens and its fire protection. For well over 100 years, this area where the development is proposed constitutes a natural water retention watershed area that has supplied the quality and the quantity of water for the city of Gardner and upon which we rely today. The property involved, as I said, lies smack in the middle of that. And earlier this evening in their presentation, the proponents cavalierly mentioned that, well, we're in this, and so is at the hospital and the cemetery and the golf course. All three entities were developed decades, many, many decades ago, before there was a Federal Clean Waters Act and before there was a Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. So I'll
Thank you.
I'll make it very quickly. In closing, let me say that any elected official who votes in favor of this proposal without first doing their due diligence and getting the results of hydrological studies and traffic studies and environmental impact is a disgrace to your oath of office and renders you unfit to hold public office. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the person in, the next person in line, but I would also like to call the following numbers to the chamber to be ready to testify. Number 11, Bruce Chester. Number 12, Timothy St. Jean. Number 13, Sheila Heglin. Number 14, Paul Demeo. Number 15, Robert R. Schwartz. Number 16, Mia Young. Number 17, Colleen O'Donnell. Number 18, Brenda Dill. Number 19, Carol Thibodeau. Number 20, Eleanor Gramash. Number 21, John Hochard. Number 22, Scott Graves. Number 23, Stephen Rockwood. Number 24, Lorraine Peabody. Number 25, Carolyn Kamuta. Number 26, Jana McPherson. Number 27, Corinne Smith. Number 28, Gardner McPherson. Number 29, Nancy Bellevue. And number 30, Katie Stevens. So numbers 11 through 30, if you're not already in the chamber, please make your way up to the chamber. We will continue with number six, Dorothy LeBlanc.
Council Madam President and members of the council, my name is Dorothy LeBlanc, a resident of 202 Stone Street and a longtime resident of Gardner. I am not one of the residents that Bay State Racing spoke to. I am here to oppose the proposal of Bay State Racing at 827 Green Street in Gardner. My first concern, like many citizens of Gardner, is the drinking water supply that is fed from Cowie Pond, which runs along the side of the property of 827 Green Street into Pearly Brook and then into Crystal Lake Reservoir. In my opinion, this is an environmental issue that will affect our drinking water, watershed land, fernal pools, and wetlands. As a butters to the property proposed by Bay State Racing site, we are very concerned that our own wells will be contaminated with the use of fertilized fertilizers and chemicals that will be used to treat the horse racetrack. These chemicals will leach into the groundwater and pose a high risk to health and safety issues for all. Keeping our water safe from contaminants is an extremely pertinent issue and should be considered and not ignored. Secondly, the traffic is a major concern. Route 140 is not designed to accept the influx of additional traffic. Adding hundreds of cars, shuttle buses, trucks and horse trailers, RVs, vendors and equipment on a race day to an already accident-prone area causes grave concern for the residents, the pedestrians, and cyclists. Route 140 at the Green Street and Stone Street intersection is already very treacherous without the addition to all these vehicles. My third and last concern is the noise and level and privacy that will come along with the proposed race park. The noise from the horse tracks, daily operations, as well as racetrack events and festivities will impact the quality of life, not only for us, but for all our residents on Stone Street. Our home that we have lived for the past 38 years is situated within 500 feet of the property at 827 Green Street. The peace and quiet we currently enjoy was a significant factor in the choice we made to purchase and live on Stone Street for all these years. I hope you will take not only my concerns into consideration, but all the concerns made here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number seven
Madam President, point of order, point of order.
Counselor?
I must ask, I know emotions are high, but we must remain cool, calm, and collected, that the applauding, the crowd noises, we must remain fair and equitable to all those presenting to make sure we get through this evening. If we might be able to restrict that, would help us go through this process.
Thank you, counselor. Noted. Thank you. Number seven, Russell LeBlanc.
I'm going to pass, thank my wife. She'll go for me.
You second your wife? That works. Number eight, Deborah Alley.
First, I'd like to speak of Sterling Suffolk Downs, a closed horse racing track. The Yonan was found guilty of polluting 123 square miles of water in watershed. The pollutants initially went into Sales Creek, Bell Isles, Saltmarsh, various other waterways, and eventually into Boston Harbor. EPA investigators found stormwater contaminated with, number one, manure, two turbid brown runoff going into Sales Creek with elevated levels of pollutants such as ammonia, suspended solids, animal waste with excess nutrients and pathogens.
Excuse me, Deborah, can you speak right into the microphone? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All of these are poison to our drinking water. Why do I mention Suffolk Downs? Richard Fields, a major investor in Bay State, was the owner of Suffolk Downs. Do you want someone who destroyed water and wetlands on such a huge scale coming into our cities? I don't.
Thank you. There is no number nine. Number 10, Carla Wadzikiewicz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Wadzikiewicz, and my husband and Bob, my husband Bob and I live at 280 Stone Street. I am not one of the residents that spoke with Bay State about this issue. We've lived at this location for 44 years, and our property directly abuts the property at 827 Green Street. We've spent 44 years working on our property and our home, making it ready for resale as we age, and if this proposal goes through, our property is worth not what it should be. we age, and if this proposal goes through, our property is worth not what it should be. I have the same concerns as many of you do about the water issue, our well especially, and if our well is tainted, then ultimately the city water supply will be tainted. Then there is that impact of the traffic, the added traffic that we will see on 140, which is an already dangerous roadway. And there are additionally many more concerns. But I'm also concerned about the wagering that was mentioned in the brochure, and Mr. Stefanini told us a bit about that tonight, but I feel that there are still many unanswered questions regarding the sports betting licenses. Race tracks and sports betting licenses are tied together in Massachusetts Gaming Law, Chapter 128A and 23N. And they would automatically be eligible to apply for the sports betting wagering license, which I think is the underlying issue, why they're trying to sell the city on this proposal. Why else would they be spending so much money to build this track if it's only going to be used a few days a year? We were told at the last presentation at Williams, and again, that horse racing and simulcast do not make a lot of money. Bay State wants those two sports betting licenses so they can make millions of dollars while destroying our watershed land, our forests and wildlife, and threatening mine and my neighbors' sense of security. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Number 11, Bruce Chester. Number 11, Bruce Chester. Number 11, Bruce Chester. Number 12, Timothy St. Jean.
My name's Timothy St. Jean. I live at 418 Stone Street. I could give a lot more than the three minutes that I'm allowed, um, but I'll hit you with some bullet points. Uh, traffic on 140 is a nightmare, we all know that. Traffic study isn't just the number of cars, it's the type of vehicles. Anybody that drives, I drive to Cambridge and Boston pretty much daily for work. I travel Route 2. I never see anyone hit in the back of an 18-railer when they get onto the highway. You see it a quarter mile back as the traffic slows because people aren't paying attention. So it's not the number of cars that Bay State would be bringing in, it's the type of vehicles. You have horse trails, all these things pulling up. There is no merging lane right there. So what are they gonna do? They're gonna have to slow down on 140 directly to get into their property. It's gonna cause backups, you're gonna have accidents there. That's all I'll say about that. Um, I'm gonna hit the bullet points of what Bay State proposed to you guys in the 188 pages of documents that the, of pages that they gave to you guys. Mass dot says there's no notable accidents. That's a, that's a bull. Let's talk about the numbers that they're actually talking about. Bay State says, um, well, that part's talking all of the state, so we won't even go into that one. We talked a lot about horse racing days, but what they haven't mentioned is, in their own thing, at this facility, their analysis according to their people that did this research is talking about 70 other events, which according to this is gonna result in 82,500 visits from non-Massachusetts residents a year. See, it sounds like a lot more cars than what they're proposing in their traffic study. Retirement Farm Company, that's another 7,000 out-of-state visitors a year. Again, a lot more traffic than what's really proposed on horse racing days. Substantial acreage. Ideal site is approximately 600 acres of continuous land. They have 114, which they've omitted, a third to half of it would be unusable. So they're going from 600 acres of ideal property down to 80, far substantial less. Key assumptions in their analysis, they're talking about 75 days of racing during the typical season, nine races per day, 675 races a year. They're speculating 3,000 visitors a day, which doesn't line up with the other numbers that were already presented. How can you make a informed decision when their facts that they're presenting to you guys don't even line up with their own information? The host agreement, I won't get much into that because they already said that that has to get rewritten again, but there was discrepancies in that as well. Um, I don't think you guys have enough information to really make an informed decision. Again, a lot of contradictory things in their own information of the 188 pages of documentation that they submitted to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah.
May I respond?
You can respond.
You know, I said I'd wait till the end to respond, but there are a couple of things that just deserve a quick response. The first is the citations in that are true, the UMass study, they're not this project. And they're... It says directly that this is... They're talking about the UMass study, which is dealing with a project that is 70 events, et cetera. This project is a component of what is envisioned in that, it is not talking about us. The second thing I, the second thing I would...
Mr. St. Jean, if you're gonna speak, you can come back.
Second thing I would say is Richard Fields is not an investor, he's not involved in this project. Quick question, do you love what he's saying or do I have to...
You've gone over your three minutes, but since he did choose to speak, you can come up and do that. We, we have asked the proponent to, to wait till the end and, but again, in this case, having some facts and some information, I'm gonna allow it, but I'm gonna ask that we wait till the end, till everyone has spoken. If you have anything else that you wanna add to it, Mr. Stefanini, I just wanna be sure that we can wait till the end.
I'm happy to respond to whatever you want to do.
Thank you, but we also have people who need to speak, and I wanna be sure that they're able to do that.
I mean, again, I, I just read it word for word is how they've written it, and it's specific, if I find the right page and the ones that I pulled. It specifically says this facility. This facility is talking about this facility.
They're talking about the facility that's in the study, which is 10 years old. That study, that report and that studying is not relative to us, it's relative to a vision for what that facility could do.
The horse park's other major components, first-class esoteric facility, which is what you're proposing to the city council.
It's a component of that study, but it's a generic study, not relative to us.
So, so why submit? Let's be frank.
Because it's on point with the times of activity that occurred there. It's not specific.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna end this here, I think this is, I think that the point has been made, I think we can do a follow-up afterwards if you're okay with that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. She already knows, she's already saying. Number 16, Sheila Heglin, come on down.
My name is Sheila Heglin, I live at 340 Stone Street, and I was not spoken to by Bay State Racing.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Number 13, Sheila Heglin.
I am 13.
Number, yep, you are number 13. I said you were number 16, so I didn't want anyone in the audience...
I knew we were talking about...
Number 12, just want you were number 13, Sheila Heglin.
Okay.
Please continue.
All right. So I am concerned also about the water greatly. It's one of our precious resources. But I'd like to speak a little about, um, not just the water, but the watershed, wetlands, and the flow, or the disruption of the flow of surface water. And to let you know that every household on Stone Street and Wheeler Street has a well. So we don't get city water, but we do have wells. I gave the council a map, and the green line that, on the map is the John Eaton Road, and that's what I'm going to refer to. John Eaton Road is a paper road that goes from Stone Street through the woods to the 140 bike path, but it also abuts the Gamma property. And, again, in 2015, the Bike Committee wanted to put a bike, a paved bike road 10 feet down John Eaton Road. They hired a independent company to analyze it and assess it for wetlands, surface water, and watershed. At the end of the assessment, they could not put it down because of wetlands, surface water, and watershed. Now that's a 10-foot paved road that people were going to ride bikes on. Well, John, the Gamma property that you see on your, uh, map, they were talking about digging into the hillside, and the hillside is right below John Eaton Road. The other thing is that there are the blue lines on the map, and those blue lines refer to public surface water protection area. And there's a lot of blue lines on that map. So if you can't put a bike path on the prop, John Eaton Road to destroy or disturb wetlands and surface water, what's gonna happen when they start digging in for access roads, for increasing the size of the track? I probably assume that it's probably going to have something to do with the wetlands, the watershed, and the disruption of the flow of the surface water. The one last thing I wanna say is that when I asked a lot of people to sign, to call, email the counselors, many said yes, but a lot said no, and one of the things I asked them was why, and they said that they do what they want, so please, don't make them correct.
Thank you.
Bay State Racing...
Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul DeMayo, 9 Willis Road, in the lovely city of Gardner, Massachusetts. Bay State Racing, a limited liability corporation, made a statement that Gardner is a poor community, and they are absolutely right. As a matter of fact, Gardner is an environmental justice community of 73.4% due to its poverty level, which covers 76.9% of Gardner's land mass. The property of Gamma at 827 Green Street in Gardner and the proposed horse track is entirely within the environmental justice zone for the city of Gardner. Because of this, it falls under the environmental justice guidelines and permit procedures of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This proposed racetrack should go through MIPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, for scrutiny of the environmental hazards in a watershed protection zone. Environmental justice populations are those segments of the population that the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has determined to be most at risk, being unaware or unable to participate in environmental decision-making, or to gain access to state environmental resources, or are especially vulnerable. Sadly, most local government officials, including those in Gardner, have no clue what environmental justice is or the mandates by the state to protect this class of people. Mike Nicholson and the city council have failed to notify the 73.4% environmental justice population of the risk to the public drinking water supply on which they rely for drinking, cooking, and bathing. The proposed racetrack and gambling facility at 827 Green Street is entirely within Gardner's aquifer and drinking water protection zone. It abuts Pearlie Brook, which connects Cowie Pond and Pearlie Brook Reservoir, two of three of Gardner's major surface water supplies. This property is the headwaters of the Otter River, Miller's River, and Connecticut River. The proposed racetrack is a direct threat to all of these bodies of water. The Gardner City Council is under no timeframe to approve or reject this proposal and should refer it to the Public Welfare, Public Service, and Public Safety Committees for study and report. In addition, the city council should re...
Madam President, point of order, this president's taking away from his neighbors.
Mr. DeMayo, you need to...
I, uh, one more...
Mr. DeMayo, you reached your three minutes, please finish.
One more paragraph.
You've reached...
Please, George.
You've reached your minutes, you've reached your three minutes, please finish.
I'll be back.
Number 15, Robert R. Schwartz.
I'm Robert R. Schwartz from 268 Comer Street in Gardner. From all the people I see in this room, I don't see any of them that have owned horses or worked on a horse farm, uh, never mind even care to take care of, do anything with horses. I myself have owned a horse, and I've worked on a horse farm for two years, all right? What Bay State's approving, I think is great. Uh, I don't know if anybody in this town knows, there is no watershed or any protection on that farm for the last 150 years, nor have they had a problem in 150 years for the aquifer. They're willing to propose to make sure that they don't have any problems with the water and aquifer as well. Never mind, they've got hundreds of, of checks and balances that they need to go through. Can they do it? I don't know. But if they're willing to bring in $25 million to make that farm that's been raising horses for 150 years, never mind that they're not planning on increasing the amount of horses on that farm, on, on, other than the days of racing, how is that gonna hurt Gardner? That's my biggest question. But they've got so many things against them, I, I wish them the best of luck, but I'm not against it. You know, the people that own horses, they start around $10,000, they go up to $1 million. It costs their owners minimum of $1,000 a month to just take care of them, not counting the training. The jobs that they could bring in, great, the, the help that they could bring in, the veterans that have PSD and other problems, um, the handicap that horse farms help on a regular basis is huge. Until you see it for yourself, um, I wouldn't turn it down, because if they're willing to do all these extra things after hours or during their regular hours when they're not racing, it helps the community a great deal. And I really been concerned about the watershed, but guess what? They got a record of 150 years without a problem, and they don't have anything done. They're willing to go forward for the next 150 years and have a reason and a way to be checks and balances to make sure that they don't have a problem. So, I'm sorry, I know you, all you guys are gonna hate me because I'm for this, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. We're gonna take a brief recess. We're going to take a brief recess. I'm going to call the public hearing back to order. Beginning with number 16, Mia Young or Maya Young.
Hi, Mia Young, 42 Wausau Street, Gardner. At first, I couldn't wrap my head around the thought of Gamma selling their property to investors looking to build a horse racing facility. Gamma is an organization that provides services for those with addiction. Horse racing is associated with gambling, which is listed as an addiction as well, and often leads to substance abuse. After spending weeks researching and trying to understand why Gamma would provide an opportunity for the racetrack to operate in Gardner, I was able to understand better. This sale would also allow Gamma to move into a bigger facility, and Gamma would receive a multimillion dollar donation. They've been receiving donations from the Bay State before we even knew about this new proposal. It's all about the money. It's always been about the money. One hand washes the other. In this case, Bay State will help to create more addicts, which will benefit Gamma, as every person they take in brings more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen O'Donnell, 21 Washington Street, Gardner, Mass. I don't really have a whole lot to say, other than I know I've been on farms, I grew up on them, and there's a lot of waste, and I don't know how you're going to get rid of it, truthfully. I don't think that it's a good idea. Too close to the watershed, that many animals in one place, chickens, horses, it doesn't mix. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Number 18, Brenda Dill.
Hi, my name is Brenda Dill. I live at 32 Pelly Street in Gardner. I was born in Gardner, and I've lived here all my life. My great-grandparents, grandparents, parents, and I have lived here, paid taxes here since the early 1900s, raised our families here. We've had family members that are firefighters, police officers, registered nurses. We've contributed to this community. My entire family and I oppose horse racing in Gardner, and request the city council vote against it. We believe in making a living without harming other people, animals, or the environment. We are a community where people who actually live in Gardner support businesses, schools, and healthcare jobs that feed back into the community. Future generations depend on our informed decisions today. Number two, I'm a registered nurse, and I've treated patients in hospitals for drug and alcohol withdrawal and associated physical and mental illnesses. We don't live in a vacuum. Everything in, everything we do affects others around us. Let's promote businesses that help our citizens through education, protecting our environment, and preserving our water. Please vote no to horse racing.
Thank you. Number 19, Carol Tibido.
My name is Carol Tibido. I live at 1353 Green Street on 140, and my home, it abuts the area where this proposal is stated. What we have is an area with water and the watershed, and the city's second backup for water, so that's my main concern. However, other concerns like increasing crime, traffic issues, other things, this is about six houses from my house. And so I have a personal interest in making sure my voice is heard. I just have a few notes. My husband is retired military, and, you know, as far as veterans, we don't, and PTSD, somebody mentioned, but we don't want chemicals, and I know they say there's no chemicals, but we don't want interference with our property. We want to have a peaceful home, peaceful neighborhood. And I see that any agreement between the city and Bay State is going to be ambiguous, because some promises are an impossibility, such as setting the number of days that there will be races each year. The Gaming Commission, my understanding, is they are the ones that set how many races are to happen each year. And they just said earlier that they would have certain amount of races, but they don't have control over that. And once Gardner, if they do, votes, then we have no more control over what's going on over there. And also, if there is a motion to have a vote earlier, or another time than August 5th, I ask that you would not have a motion, and that nobody would be in favor of a motion of changing that date. I think more time is needed overall. And if the land becomes an issue and the state ends up shutting down the racetrack or something because of some violations, which somebody earlier alluded to, were occurring at Suffolk Downs with some of the investors. If something like that happens in the future, it's out of our hands also, as I said. And earlier, we were asked to think of the hillside at 140 as, you know, a place to put your picnic blanket, like Tanglewood. Well, this isn't Tanglewood, and also, the nice sales pitch is not research. Thank you.
Eleanor Gamash, 21 Norman Street. When I look at the land, and I heard Mr. Stefanini say that they were going to be working on a hill, there's natural gravity. It rains, whatever goes on top runs down, and it will run into our watershed land. Any disturbance to any topography in that area will destroy our water. I beg the council to seriously consider whether we want healthy people in the city of Gardner, or sick because our water has been polluted. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Hoshard. I live at 332 Matthew Street in Gardner. I've been a resident of Gardner since 1985. I'm asking the city council to vote no on the horse track proposal on 827 Green Street. Horse racing is a dying industry. Since the year 2000, 41 horse tracks have closed, 26 of them just the last 10 years. Only 22 states in the U.S. still have thoroughbred horse racing. While some may claim that this track has, these tracks have closed due to economic losses of horse racing, we can, we can see in polls in major newspapers that Americans do not want cruelty to animals any longer, and they don't support horse racing as a sport. In fact, our own Massachusetts citizens, by majority ballot, voted out dog racing back in 2008 due to the cruelty of the sport. We have to ask ourselves why. Seven towns in Massachusetts said no to developers building horse tracks in their, in their towns. 2018 Lancaster, 2018 Raleigh, 2019 Great Barrington, 2019 Wareham, 2020 Plymouth, 2021 Sturbridge, 2021 Hardwick, 2002, I'm sorry, 2022 Hardwick. Why did the last thoroughbred track, Suffolk Downs, close down in 2019? Because people in the state don't want thoroughbred horse racing. There are over 1,000 horses that die every year on racetracks and training facilities and in their stalls in the U.S. Take a moment to think about that. Would we be okay with, if a thousand humans, athletes died each year so that we could watch the sport and gamble on it? Right. Bay State Racing says that they're ensuring the safety and integrity of horses in their plan. However, the sources that they have given for the protection brings concerns. The New England Horsemen's Belivulent Association is focused on racetrack workers and lobbying the state for more dollars for race purses, not on the safety and well-being of each of the horses. The Safety Integrity and Safety Authority, HISA, is tied up in court issues with doubt that it will even exist in the next few years, let alone be enforced now. These protections do not guarantee horses will not be drugged and run to collapses. We have all seen in national news, year after year, on famous horse tracks across the country. Do we want, do we want horse deaths on our hands because we think these developers' promises are going to benefit our city? We need to be objective, educated about what we're inviting into our community. We cannot, don't make any mistakes that this is a huge commercial horse racing operation being proposed here where horses will die. This is not a small therapeutic horse riding outfit. Why gamble on dying industry, one that hurts animals, the environment, and the rates of addiction? We have so many good things to, going on in our city. We do not need a horse racetrack on Green Street. This is why I'm urging a no vote for the horse racetrack at that location. Additionally, I have sent in written testimony-
Mr. Hoshard, you have reached your three minutes. If you can please finish.
With all the citations to support these facts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call the following numbers to come to the council chamber, as you will be the next to testify, after we finish up the numbers we've already called. Number 31, Joyce Vincent. Number 32, Mary Marsh. Number 33, David Antea. Number 34, Kevin Bailey. Number 35, Edmund Bilado. Number 36, Anthony Roggerio. Number 37, Kimberly Blake. Number 38, Lane Roe Mitchell. Number 41, Pamela Blank. Number 42, Martin Gray. Number 43, Harrison Williams Jr. Number 50, Amy Hope. Number 128, Peter Sargent. Number 129, David Hillman. As a technical note, not all of the numbers were given out in order, just in case anybody's We will begin, I'm sorry, we will continue with number 22, Scott Graves.
Hi, everybody. They call me Scott Graves. I live at 69 Lakeview Drive in South Gardner. I'm always interested in the procedures, so basically what happened here tonight was that city council took a straw poll, which is not required, but usually, I was on city council for 16 years. Usually what happens is the city councils have a little discussion first, so that you can, so the citizens can get a sense of where they're coming from. We have no idea why they all voted no. No idea whatsoever. The presentation was unbelievably great. It was an excellent presentation. If I came from another city, I'd say, get these guys in here, it sounds, it sounds great. The gentleman had an answer for everything, and for the life of me, I can't understand why any of the city councils voted no. But straw polls mean nothing. So, we know that the mayor wants this project, otherwise we wouldn't be here, because the statute requires both the mayor and the city council to approve the location. That's what you guys have to do, you have to approve the location, not the use, the location. So, the mayor's going to exert a lot of pressure on the city council, as if he hasn't already. So, I suspect that, and Craig, Craig's not here, so Craig won't have to change his vote, but five other people will have to change their vote, which I suspect will happen, because the mayor and the proponents will come in and say, what concern did you have? And somebody, and one of the councils that voted no will say, well, I had this one concern, and they'll fix that concern. So that brings me to what I hope the city council does, is, and I hope you get the host community agreement before you vote. Because the gentleman can say, I'm committed to this, I'm committed to that, I'm committed to this. Commitment means nothing until you sign your name to the bottom line on that contract. So the city council, and I used to say this when I was on city council, I used to call the city solicitors and say, I want to see the host agreement, or whatever agreement we had to, that was related to the project that we had to approve or disapprove. So get the host agreement first, the final version of it. Look at it yourself so the citizens can see it, because you get to have that before you vote. And the other thing is, you only hear one side of the story on these things. You only hear, and it's, the presentation was unbelievably overwhelmingly convincing. But the citizens don't get to hire their expert. The city council don't get, you guys don't get to hire your experts. So it's a one side, it's like going to court and hearing one side of the trial. The plaintiff gets up and makes the argument, and the defendant has no chance whatsoever to say anything. So, I think the city council has ways to hire their own experts. I know there's money in the budget for that. I'm sure the mayor would be happy to get you that, because you only hear one side of the story. So, be careful. I made a bad decision with a sludge landfill. The mayor gave us all kinds of information that looked great, made it, led us to believe that there was only one choice to make, so we-
Madam President, please order-
So, I voted, I, I voted for, no, it's an example that-
Mr. Reeves, please stay on-
Once you guys vote no-
Please stay on the topic of the meeting, Mr. Reeves.
You can't change your vote after. So it's just an example that, be careful what you vote for, because you can't change it after. Thank you. Sorry about that, but it's true.
Thank you.
Stephen Rockwood, 310 Pearl Street. I was going to just get up here and yield my time, but I decided not to. How many of you have been up to the Cowie Pond area? Everything from Cowie Pond toward 140, Pearlie Brook, Wilderbrook, that all flows into Pearlie Brook. If we get crap, and I mean that, crap in our water, we will not get the crap out of the water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number 24, Laureen Peabody.
Laureen Peabody, 3 Jackson Park, Gardner. Counselors, I am opposed to using 827 Green Street as a site for a racetrack. It is not a matter of supporting the sale of private property or of reaping the rewards promised by Bay State Racing, BSR, should they become the new owners. It should not be about the fears of potentially worse land use occupying it if BSR's offer to Gamma is rebuffed. We have been told by Gamma that they will remain on site. It is only to me about protecting the very important, vulnerable, and sensitive site shown on the official city maps as Surface Water Protection Overlay District. Our past city fathers protected this large area, and I believe you should too, and continue to. While researching, I found this on mass.gov. It directly ties horses and surface water drinking supply together using 310 CMR 22.000. Quote, title, "Housekeeping: Protecting Public Health and Drinking Water." Public water supplies, both groundwater and surface water, are regularly monitored for water quality to ensure that good, clean water is delivered to the consumer. However, water treatment can be costly to the consumer. Therefore, the water supplier's goal is to have as pristine a raw water supply as possible to guarantee quality water at a minimum cost. End quote. I'm sorry if I didn't say quote. 827 Green Street has been in use as a horse site for many years, with the use of fertilizers, open manure piles, and runoff. The science of what was deemed safe and allowed in common use changes. I ask whether the risk of adding to the insults that have already occurred on the land are offset by the rewards being offered by BSR. My answer is no, and I hope that your research has led you to the same conclusion. The Central Mass AFL-CIO issued a letter which includes in part, quote, "The footprint of this project will be real and long-lasting," end quote. I know what they want it to mean, I know what I want it to mean, and for what it could mean. What do you want it to mean? What footprint will you leave behind? What footprint will you leave behind? This decision affects everyone, present or not. Think the River Rat Race in Athol, Billy Goat Boats in Orange, and all the way to the southern end of the Connecticut River. My family, your family, young, old, elder, not yet born. I urge the City Council to vote no on locating the track at 827 Green Street. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Carolyn Kamuta, 400 Pleasant Street, Gardner. As you all know, and first of all, I want to apologize to all of you for the mountains of emails that I have sent to many of you and some of the phone calls. It's been quite a lot, and it has been a year, maybe a year and a half, of me researching not only Bay State Racing, Commonwealth Racing, Hardwick, Sturbridge, Great Barrington, all the different things that go together from all of these different communities, how they voted, why they voted, speaking to people in all of those communities to see exactly what, you know, was going on and, you know, exactly what this horse racing was. I researched Suffolk Downs and why they closed. I read about how many cars went to Suffolk Downs the day that they closed. I just have, you know, a wealth of information of which is very hard for one person to digest and disseminate to all of you. And I know there are some people, and Counselor Tyros, I apologize for a horrible voicemail to you yesterday. I was just overwhelmed with a few things and sort of spoke out of turn over the phone over just one minor little detail. I guess it's the straw that broke the camel's back and it had nothing to do with you. I have a group on Facebook. It has been in existence for over a year. At first, it was the No Rezone 140, because I did not want that to be rezoned. I worked with the people of the Land Trust, Paul DeMayo, Anna Wilkins of the Land Trust, and all the things that went along with the land. I'm not much of a conservationist, although, you know, I like clean water, I like clean air, I don't like light pollution, I don't like wells being contaminated, and I do believe there's a possibility of those wells, excuse me, I should have brought water, wells on Stone Street being contaminated. Every race, and Mr. Stephanini can correct me on this, on the gaming commission application from Hardwick, they use $10,000 worth of fertilizer after every race weekend, is that correct?
It is not.
It's on the gaming commission license application, and that-
The farm that existed there was a farm that used fertilizer to do Bluegrass, Alpha Alpha, and it was continuing in operation.
And nonetheless-
Ms. Kamuta, you can-
Well, I'm done.
You can finish that thought.
Nonetheless, fertilizer, weed killer, pesticides, lots of horses, urine, manure, everything is gonna go into the wetlands. My friend bought a new truck, and we drove by, and it sat up high, and all I could see is water right in the area that they planned to put the track, not the old track, but where they want to put the new track on the western side of that property along 140. So, that's my thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Janet McPherson. I live at 77 Riverside Road. Good evening, Councilmen and Women, Madam President. In this world, we have certain basic things that is needed to survive. Food, air, shelter, and water. Knowing that we need these things to sustain us and the mere fact that our water has a possibility of being contaminated would affect everyone here today. The evidence is very clear that the watershed can be contaminated, which leads into Pearlie Brook, into Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake, being our city drinking water, then would be compromised. Is this the chance you are willing to take? The chance of your citizens of Gardner becoming sick due to the contamination? Is the health and welfare of your children, your grandchildren, and future generations worth this proposal? I can answer this question with no hesitation. The answer is no. You see, there is no money in this world worth risking thousands of people's lives for such a proposal. I urge all of you to vote no on this proposal for the health and welfare of all of your Gardner citizens.
Thank you. Number 27, Corinne Smith.
Hi, my name is Corinne Smith. I live at 11 Greenwood Street in Gardner. I've only lived in Gardner for seven years, I'm a newbie, and I thank you, Madam President, and the City Council for this opportunity, in which I really think is an amazing exercise in citizenship. I have two curiosities, two aspects of this project that I've been wondering about ever since it came into the public eye, and maybe it's because I just don't have enough information, but I'm curious, we saw a slide tonight that said there were 1,200 horse and hay farms in Massachusetts, and I wonder, in undertaking this project, if anyone has surveyed those 1,200 horse and hay farms to see if any of those horse owners really want to participate in this property as a breeding and a retirement and a racing property? Or if it's a philosophy of maybe if we build it, they might come? Just curious about that, I wonder about that. Oh, and I'm also here as a concerned resident, I want to make that sure, clear. The other thing that I'm wondering about is that in the proposals, Bay State Racing always says that 95% of their revenue is going to come from wagering on other races in other places electronically. So if 95% of the revenue comes electronically, that sounds like a computer and a tech job to me, and I'm wondering why you need a physical facility for horses anyway? And maybe there's a regulation with a gaming commission, I don't know, but if it's almost all electronic, that sounds like it could be done in an office? Again, I don't know. Just bringing it up again as a concerned resident. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Gardner McPherson, 77 Riverside Road. Ah, Council, I hope you heard the cheers in the cheap seats back there when you guys all said no. Keep it that way. Don't let the mayor pressure you. Do what's right for the city of Gardner. This is a want, it's not a need. We don't need the money. Stop blowing the money, Mr. Mayor. It's a want, not a need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Joyce Vincent, 63 Sunrise Lane, Gardner. This idea of a racetrack coming to the city of Gardner is a big negative. For obvious reasons, our water supply. To the counselors, you all have a voice for the people, and you have the power to vote no to this racetrack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Marsh. I live at 150 Acadia Road. Esteemed members of the City Council, I'm very encouraged by the results of the straw vote that you took, and I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you who responded to the emails that I sent at the beginning of the process and then right up to this process. I'm here this evening to let you know, as you well know now, that I am opposed to the proposal before the City Council to allow Bay State Racing to build a horse racing track and gaming facility at 827 Green Street. The location that has been chosen is an environmentally sensitive area whose surface water drains into Cowie Pond and Pearlie Brook, which drain into Pearlie Brook Reservoir, which is the backup reservoir for Crystal Lake, and in times of drought, it gets pumped out. In order to maintain the lush grass around the track, herbicides to kill weeds and fertilizers to maintain the lawns will be sprayed on those lawns. When there are big rain events, which do happen with some frequency during the summer, these chemicals on par with the carcinogenic roundup will end up in our water, and once there, will remain to the detriment of any of the citizens of Gardner who cannot afford to drink bottled water. Along with the chemicals, horse manure and the biological pathogens excreted in the manure and urine, there will likely be toxic runoff from the cars, trucks, campers, and horse trailers, which will be parked on an impermeable tar surface of a parking lot large enough to accommodate them and many other vehicles. The gasoline, diesel, radiator, and transmission fluids and motor oil also stand to runoff and poison our drinking water. Is this the legacy that we want to leave for our children and our grandchildren? At this point in Bay State Racing's quest to build a track and gaming center, there's been no environmental impact studies and no traffic studies, so aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak? I beg of you, please do not make a grave mistake and allow this damage to happen to our drinking water. Our drinking water should be considered to be a more valuable commodity than gold because we cannot survive without it. I was born and raised in Gardner, and I live in the house in which I grew up. What will happen to our property values when we no longer have safe drinking water? In the 1950s, is that my time?
That is your time. Do you finish your thought, please?
Okay. I just wanted to say that I love this city, I love the people in this city, I love the lakes, and I love the forest, so I can't remain silent on this issue, and I really do beg all of you, please, to vote no to horse racing on this parcel of land. Once our drinking water is polluted, it's gone forever. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do, at this time, want to make an announcement that if you hear, if you speak here this evening, you can also submit written testimony, if there's more testimony that you'd like to give after the meeting, and that is for any member of the public, it is noted in the public hearing notice. We will continue with number 33, David Antea.
My official number.
Thank you.
David Antea, 444 Stone Street. I've sent you emails, all of the City Councilors, so you basically know my concerns against the racetrack. I'm in agreement with the previous issues presented by the residents before me that were against the racetrack. I did want to mention that in Gardner Magazine, Bay State had their literature, which included, besides horse racing, concerts and racing, and renting out the facility. And I was curious how many concerts and how many rentals they would be having throughout the year, and how that would environmentally impact their facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Bailey. I'm 157 Ash Street here in Gardner. I've lived in my, or had my home here for about 21 years. I realize that Bay State Racing has presented a proposal showing all the reasons that Gardner should allow the new facility to be built, but they, like any business, are only gonna show you what they feel the positives are. They are not gonna tell you what the negatives of their proposal are. I am very happy and very pleased, as most everybody downstairs in the auditorium was, to hear you with the straw vote of no. You do not know how happy you made all those people down there, and I pray that that stays that way. I'm not gonna beat the dead horse, so to speak, because everybody's talking about the water quality. All I will say is, with the water quality, it is the most valuable. You can have a nice school, you can have great parks, you can have a nice police station, public safety. If you don't have water and clean water, you're not gonna drive any business, and you're not gonna grow the city. It is going to die. If you look out in the western part of this country, you have states going to court with each other over who can get what water because they're so strict in rationing it. You're not even allowed to collect rainwater in a water barrel in California. They are so strict about controlling every drop of water. If we don't have clean water, just close up shop, guys. Again, I just thank you very much for the no vote we heard. I know it wasn't binding, and I just pray that you guys keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Counselors-
Mr. Bilado, can you just-
Thanks for the chance to talk.
Just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Ah, yeah. Ed Bilado, 27 Ridgewood Lane.
Thank you.
Very encouraged by your straw vote tonight. I'm encouraged by your straw vote tonight, and just in the time between now and when you have your actual vote, don't let the numbers excite you, the money. You know, they're talking about $240,000 in a community impact fee, 1.5% of the wages. With back that out, it comes up to $16 million. But Mr. Stephanini tonight told us that they might be making $5 to $8 million. So, my figures, that looks like $75,001.20, so it's only half of what they're estimating. And on the, on the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, that $230,000 is locked in. You know, it looks good compared to a million-dollar assessed property now, which paid, which would pay $15,000 in taxes. But they're gonna invest $28 million. And I don't know if the value of the property will go up to 28 million, but if it did, in those five years, we'll lose a million dollars in taxes. in those five years, we'll lose a million dollars in taxes. They're offering you a responsible gaming program, which makes sense because gambling can be a problem, as can pot, which we make money on now. I don't know what's next, a brothel? I hope not. And one other thing in the HUS community agreement, as part of the justification for approving this, it was mentioned that the citizens, the voters of Worcester County in 1974 voted to approve horse racing in the county. On that same vote, or that same ballot, there was another question, to approve dog racing. Dog racing's no longer allowed here. You know, fifty years ago, I wasn't even old enough to vote, and now I'm an old guy. So we can assume that our cemeteries are full of people who thought racing was a good idea fifty years ago, but not now. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call the next people to come up to the chamber to offer their testimony. Number 201, Barbara Kellogg. Number 202, Robyn Proudy. Number 203, Carolyn Sellers. Number 204, Paul Umbrello. Number 205, Anthony Spadia. Number 206, Stephen Baer. Number 207, Melissa Keithley. Number 208, Oliver Keithley. Number 209, Sean Hayden. 210, Arlene Brown. 211, David Kramer. 212, Carol Casella. 213, Jackson Stone. Going to continue with number 36, Anthony Ruggero.
Anthony Ruggero, 429 Parker Street, Gardner, Massachusetts. First of all, I'd like to say that Gardner's water is not good and is in crisis. I have had to replace three water coils in a water system, all within the last ten years, costing several thousand dollars. Now, this husk track is going to be in a watershed district. We already have a hospital, we have a junior college, and we have a golf course and a country club. And now they want to put a husk track in this little area, which is in a protected watershed area. Now, according to Rutgers University, to the Equine Science Center, a thousand-pound husk will defecate from four to thirteen times each day, producing thirty-five to fifty pounds of wet manure, or nine one-ton pounds of manure a year, plus urine. That's just one husk. Think of that, with forty or even a hundred horses. And the problem with hospital with horse manure and urine is that it has nitrates, phosphorus, and potassium. Gardner's water system is already contaminated. If you look at the last report, with high levels of nitrate, phosphorus, and potassium. In fact, we were listed by the DEP as being of high risk for runoff of contaminants from leachate. Now, even though they say they're going to ship this manure out, what happens if it rains? How many hours is the manure and the urine going to sit in that ground, getting in to the surface water? It's going to go through to the dirt, and it can easily reach our watershed area, which can then go into our water supply. This is extremely dangerous because our water system is already very, very, very fragile with contaminants. And EPA puts out a... EPA recently put out a whole pamphlet on husk racing tracks and water quality. And one of the things that they caution is that there can be runoff of leachate from bacteria, pathogens, and toxins from husk, manure, and urine. And that's what we would be facing right now. Now, I saw the diagram up here a little earlier, but according to the EPA, you're supposed to have a wastewater storage structure and a manure bedding storage area. I didn't see any of that. So I'm not sure if they're even familiar with this pamphlet, or if they're going to follow it, but there's a boatload of regulations under the Clean Water Act for this, and I don't know who's going to watch them or all this. The other thing I'd like to say really briefly is that many people in Gardner struggle. I'll just wrap up. Many people in Gardner right now struggle with addiction. I think putting a racing track there is contrary to their best interests and to all the citizens of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-seven, Kimberly Blake.
Hi, guys. So can you please state your name and address? My name is Kimberly Blake.
Thank you.
I live on 25 Baker Street, former home of the illegal greenhouse. So I don't have much to say. Everybody's pretty much covered everything. I just wanted to say, oh, yeah, awesome. You guys have done exactly what I knew you could do. I think you guys thought this was an easy city to target, and it's not going to be. It wasn't. And I do have to thank all the City Councilors. I mean, it's just a straw vote right now. But I've always been, I feel like, your biggest critic sometimes. And this has given me kind of a new outlook on you guys. So I just want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you. Number thirty-eight, Lane Rowe Mitchell. Number thirty-eight, Lane Rowe Mitchell. Number thirty-eight, Lane Rowe Mitchell. Number forty-one, Pam LeBlank.
Pam LeBlank, 91 Champagne Road in Gardner. There are many issues that I'm concerned with, but obviously, the main one is the water issue. Since it's our public water supply, and it's critical to our health, I'm very concerned that this endeavor will increase the risk of contamination to the surface and groundwater. And once it's contaminated, it is virtually impossible to correct. And that really worries me, and it should also worry all of you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Number forty-three, Harrison Williams, Jr.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council members, Gardner residents. My name is Harrison Williams, Jr. I live at 494 Pearl Street, about a mile and a half away from where this proposed racetrack would be. So I'm not in favor of this racetrack, and I want to commend you all, City Council members, for unanimous straw vote of no. Many people here have already said what we totally feel, and we don't want this racetrack. We are Gardner. We are Gardner. We are Gardner. A town, June 27, 1785. A city, January 1, 1923. We remain Gardner. We are Gardner. We are proud to be Gardner. I've been out here for forty-four years, moved out here from Fitchburg, Mass. I love Gardner. And I don't want to see it change. I don't want to see Gardner become something that it shouldn't be, and that's a useless city. So many people have already said what they feel. They've already done their due diligence in researching everything, and I'm in total agreement with you, and I commend you. Kudos to you all for what you've said. I'm not going to repeat any of the things that you've already said, but this is what I feel, right here. That's it. That says a lot. I'm a man who always speaks a lot, long-winded, but this is what I got to say tonight. This should be enough, and that should be it. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to come up and speak my mind, and I believe many of the citizens of Gardner's minds as well. Have a blessed day, have a blessed night, have a blessed year. And if God has His way, which I know He can, because prayers mean a lot, this racetrack will not come to the city of Gardner. We are a good city. We do not deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Number... Thank you. Number fifty, Amy Hope.
Amy Hope, 260 Baker Street. A lot of folks know me by Lily, and you're very confused right now because that's my nickname. I am not a daughter of Gardner. I come from a small barrier island in southern New Jersey known as the Wildwoods, which some of you may have heard in the news recently because former President Trump rallied down there. We were surrounded by water. I grew up one block from the bay, two blocks from the ocean. Water is precious. You have no idea, especially when you're surrounded by nothing but rine. And growing up as a kid, sometimes a water treatment plant during a storm got contaminated. And if you didn't have a bathtub full of water, and all those jars that made you look like, you know, religious folks that store water in their basements, you could be in trouble. So we all had water, always, on hand. And the racetrack doesn't need to be there. That's our water supply. And I brought something, this is really embarrassing, I just want to say this. We've had a lot of plumbing problems since we bought our home seven years ago. This is oil. We have been through several coils. It's going to cost $1,300 plus tax, again, to replace the one that's now busted again. This came out of my kitchen sink, okay? This is oil. Yes, there's some organic matter from when we plunged to, but...
Excuse me, Ms. Hope.
Yes.
You have to relate this to the topic of the meeting, so I understand you're on water, but we've got to relate it back to the... Whether there should be horse racing at 827 Green Street. I don't want to interrupt, you just want to make me aware.
Yes. No, no, no. That's very clear. But this is why I'm so concerned about the racetrack. Why there? Why in our water supply? Why there? There is so much land in Gardner, as somebody who's lived here much longer than me pointed out. Why does it need to be in our water supply? I am firmly against the racetrack because of the location. All of the reasons aside, the location is the problem. We need clean water. We don't even have it now. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Number 128, Peter Sargent.
Thank you. I've lived in Gardner longer than the current mayor.
Excuse me, can you please just state your name and address for the record?
Oh, Peter Sargent, 19 Cherry Street, Gardner. I've lived in Gardner longer than the current mayor, as I think many, many of you have. And during my time here, the water has gone from a city utility managed by the city to a contracted business that the city pays to do what the city used to do. During that time, I've seen a bunch of great ideas that didn't really go anywhere. And during that time, our water has changed. It was disclosed that the water was damaging copper in the heating coils and other parts of plumbing that the hot water flows through. Complaints to City Hall resulted in no change, and therefore, a citizen sued the city. The city didn't move to address the problem. They defended by countering that the suit was brought too late. And so the citizens of Gardner have paid for a Boston firm to fight this all the way up to the Supreme Judicial Court. Meanwhile...
Mr. Sargent, I just need you to relate this back to whether or not we should allow horse racing at 827 Green Street. I understand you need to relate this back to the topic of the public hearing.
Yes.
Which is whether or not to allow. So if you're going to get there, you've got to get there.
And the city's addressing, or failing to address, a major problem sits there, and we all are having to pay for it, and we're being sued by ourselves, and we're going to pay for that when we lose the suit. It's a class-action suit now. All we need is for something else to go on top of that and get the same sort of action or lack of action. So the city government is supposed to work on behalf of the citizens that's been fighting us for seven years in that suit. Now they want to bring prosperity to the city by managing to attract businesses that pay... They do not bring prosperity to the city by managing to attract businesses that pay workers more, not even enough for them to afford the now astronomical rents being demanded. They want to bring a horse racing track to a parcel of land that's largely wetlands, wetlands that are the headwaters of our water here in Gardner. The use would result in good engineering being put to the test, but we all know that engineering fails. And that's what we live with, is when people do all kinds of engineering that's supposed to keep groundwater from flowing places. You can't stop that kind of stuff. It's all temporary. No one has seen an engineering that doesn't at some point fail, and we're in a time of changing climate. So a plan like this needs 300 to 600 dry acres, and it's our drinking water, and once it's spoiled, it'll never be good again. We're all going to have to start getting jugs of water every week and buying that, which is going to result essentially in a more expensive life for us if we do get our water damaged, if we have to purchase more water for drinking. And that's like an extra tax on us, and we all saw our property values assessed higher. Mine was 26% last year. We don't need an extra tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 129, David Hillman.
Madam President, members of the council, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to make my voice heard.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's David Hillman. I live at 114 Rich Street. I moved here in 2019. I have two daughters, two granddaughters that live here. And like you've heard from a lot of my neighbors, the water is a concern, not just for me, but in all of you, but also for our future generations. And I think we should be responsible with our environment, and it starts with water. I'm also an animal lover. I have tons of animals. I'm not convinced that the welfare and treatment of the horses is actually, you know, I... Nobody's convinced me that they're not going to be taken care of the way everybody says they are. I know there are reports that go back and forth, they, you know, but I just, I'm not convinced. And I guess I look at it this way, if we're making dog racing illegal in Massachusetts, which we have, why are we allowing horses to be raced? I mean, aren't they essentially giant, really expensive, big dogs? They're animals. We should be considering that, and I hope you guys do consider that. I do realize it brings a lot of money, but money's not everything. And to that point, once Bay State gets their... Once they get their sports betting licenses, what's to prevent them from jumping ship? And then what are we left with? Empty promises and reneged deals? And I hope that the straw vote is an actual representation of what you're actually going to do. I have confidence that you will. I think you will. I think you guys are smart, and I think you will do your due diligence and realize that it's not for Gardner. There are better ways for Gardner to grow, and that's really not one of them. And you've heard everybody say that. I'm saying it, and I hope you guys consider that as well. And that's it. That's all I've got to say. So thank you again, and have a good night. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. We have reached the end of those Gardner residents that are signed up to speak this evening. Are there any other Gardner residents in the room or in the auditorium? If there are, please come up to the City Council chamber that have not had a chance to speak yet this evening. Any other Gardner residents that wish to speak and give testimony this evening? Any Gardner residents that desire a second opportunity to present new testimony will be given the opportunity at this time. Repetitive testimony will not be permitted. If I show hands, you can come on up.
Madam President, I would like to finish my last two paragraphs. Paul DeMayle, 9 Willis Road. As I said, the Gardner City Council is under no timeframe to approve or reject this proposal, and it should be referred to the Public Welfare, Public Service, and Public Safety Committees for study and report. In addition, the City Council should refer the proposal to the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Board of Health for their input and recommendation. This has not been done yet. They haven't been asked for their opinion. Time is not of the essence here for the residents of Gardner. and the surrounding towns who have not been consulted. The Gardner City Council took an oath to represent the people of the city to the best of their ability. Approving this location as a commercial racetrack is not in the best interest of the 73.4 population of environmental justice. You have restored my faith tonight in the council with your straw vote, and I thank you for that. Carry it over to the August meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other Gardner residents who would like to present new testimony? Be given an opportunity to speak for the second time? Please come on up.
Timothy St. Jean, 18 Stone Street. The only other thing I have a question at is, when I look up that property on the Gardner's database, it's zoned as R2, which I believe is rural residential. I know there was talk about agricultural things and this and that. I don't see how you can—horses, chickens, pigs, yes, that's all agricultural. I can agree with that. Horse racing, I don't see—just because it involves horses? How does that consider it agricultural? That would be like saying a car dealership, because they have cars, can now put in a racetrack in their parking lot because it has cars. In my mind, I'm a logical person. I don't see how, you know, just because it involves an animal, now all of a sudden it's agricultural. They're two different topics. I don't know what the state has to say about that, but again, the zoning, from when I look it up on the database, says R2. So I'd love to know how that can even be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Gardner residents which should speak for a second time and offer new testimony? Okay, we're going to continue. Number 201, Barbara Kellogg.
Barbara Kellogg, from the rural town of Holly, Mass. I can answer the last question. The zoning for 837 Green Street is rural residential. Approval of this location for horse racing will necessitate a zoning change merely because there is some discussion in the agricultural statute that mentions money from casinos going to Massachusetts to breed racehorses. Bay State and its attorneys claim that betting on racehorses, therefore, is now somehow agriculture, and thus, a commercial racetrack is agriculture and exempt from zoning. Mass General Law 23—Chapter 23K, Section 60, which is part of the Casino Law of 2011, creates a racehorse development fund. That's funded by casinos. That fund is what pays the bonuses and programs that they are talking about in the agriculture statute. Chapter 23K is not about agriculture. It's about casinos and gambling. Mass General Law, Chapter 128, the agriculture statute does not govern wagering. It merely codifies some of the benefits from Chapter 23K, the casino law, including the $4 million in purses we heard about a number of times today. That could disappear tomorrow and disappear out of the agriculture statute. It almost disappeared a month or so ago when Governor Healey's budget was to take away having that casino money go to racehorse development and go to local aid or other—other purposes. The proposal in front of you is substantially the same as last year when they knew they needed a zoning change. And some examples that come to mind are the Massachusetts Department of Revenue doesn't consider a commercial horse track to be agriculture. It defines it as commercial amusement—I'm sorry, commercial entertainment in the same category as an outdoor movie theater. It's not in the agricultural category. The Federal Department of Labor regulations specifically state that racehorse workers are agricultural workers until they set foot on a commercial racetrack property. The agricultural workers are not agricultural at the track and are subject—to—that point to the minimum wage and overtime laws that agricultural workers are not subject to back on the farm. Once they leave the commercial racetrack property, they return to be—being agricultural workers. So I would just say, this proposal requires a zoning change because a horse racing track is neither residential nor exempt agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 202, Robin Proudy.
Well, if I fall asleep, just smack me. I'm short. I'm going—I'm kind of on Barbara Kellogg's wavelength here, so I'm good. There's some things I have to skip because I don't want to repeat. My name is Robin Proudy. I'm a resident of Hardwick. My family runs a full-time farming business, 300 acres. I'm a veterinary technician by college education, but I run a dog show kennel and a boarding kennel in Hardwick. And I have seen the best and the worst of the animal world. The details are in the fine print. The Hardwick residents created this publication. It is thoroughly researched, and it is fact-checked. You would do your due diligence by reading this. Most of it applies to your city, and I have copies for all of you. I keep hearing—I heard in Hardwick, and I'm hearing in Gardner also, that Bay State Racing continues to associate agriculture with their proposal. That somehow breeding thoroughbreds will prop up all the farms and the farm businesses in Massachusetts. There are 16, only 16 farms listed on the Mass Thoroughbred Breeders Association website currently. And I can assure you that the racing industry has nothing to offer sustainable agriculture in Massachusetts. Barbara just brought up the Racehorse Development Fund, which I like to call the Beacon Hill Racetrack Fund. Paul Umbrello is quoted as saying it's the best-kept secret because it's free money for the racing industry. So, you all know that the money comes from tens of millions of dollars of casino revenue, which should go to the greater good, the citizens of Massachusetts, including Gardner. Yet the State House continues to hold this money for the racing industry. You should have a problem with that. So, it is my strong opinion that Bay State's proposal is absolutely unachievable on this land. The continued reference to 150 years of agricultural businesses on it is ridiculous. There has never been a general law 61A classification on the property, which, if you don't know what that is, it's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts land designation, which allows for a tax rate reduction if your land is used for agricultural business, a minimum of only five acres and $1,000 revenue, which proves, I'm pretty sure, no one has ever had a viable farm business on this property. If you really want to go to the races, go to Saratoga. This is really bad for Gardner.
Thank you. Number 203, Carolyn Sellers. Number 203, Carolyn Sellers. Number 203, Carolyn Sellers. Number 204, Paul Umbrello.
Can everybody hear me okay? Paul Umbrello, 102 Stowe Street, Wolfman, Mass. I am the Executive Director for the New England Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association. We are the oldest horsemen's group in the country, and we support over 1,000 members in New England, offering them forms of benevolence, life insurance, and other medical assistance. I'm going to speak quickly about the actualities in the industry that concerns horse racing safety. HISA now makes sure all tracks must follow the same standards that other tracks didn't use to follow. HISA now imposes heavy fines, and suspensions, and loss of purse money, and even being prohibited from racing completely. Race day medications can only be given by state vets. Horses are inspected in the morning of the race. They're monitored at the paddock by the state vet, and when they're at the starting gate, they're also monitored, and the state vet has the authority, he or she, to scratch that horse. There are now discussions about us using new technology, using biometric data to monitor the horse's overall well-being. Upon completion of a race, the winner of the race, as I think Mr. Stefanini testified to, is that urine and hair samples are tested from the horses. Your stewards and judges, also at the track, authorized and licensed by the commission, can also randomly pick one or two horses out of that race to also be randomly tested. Horse stalls, tax rooms, and vehicles can be randomly inspected unannounced. The gaming commission has plainclothes state police monitoring the facility. Each licensed owner, trainer, and jockey must be fingerprinted and thoroughly vetted. Our own racing director and the HPP itself have any right to refuse any horse that enters the grounds if we feel that that particular individually trainer has met any suspensions or fines. So we have that authority to oversee that. And we can ban folks—we were the first in the country, obviously, to implement an anti-slaughter rule that banned folks from racing who have sent horses directly or indirectly to slaughter. We budget annually to rescue horses. We'll continue to do that through the purse funding. I look at the site retirement facility for any horse that needs aftercare and can be retrained by staff to get them back into their second careers or new homes. I'm going quickly because I want to just respond to a couple of things. As I was misquoted, we, the horsemen, in 2011 instrumented the 2011 Gaming Act when casinos came to town to take our industry away—the jobs. All the same people in this room that wake up at 5:00 every morning and take care of the horses, and the gentleman earlier that said that. We, the horsemen, with the sports betting bill, passed the language to make sure that when investors come to town that get sports betting, simulcast, ADWs, we were protected with building a racetrack to protect those jobs, our breeders, and those farms. It's important to know that. The UMass study, I will provide the receipt. We paid for that study to show legislation how important the equine industry is and to the jobs, to this Commonwealth. When the spill that happened at Suffolk Downs many years ago, that we learned a lesson from, and we now contain the manure in a contained facility with a cover. And our grooms don't let a horse go to the bathroom and have manure without immediately picking it up. We don't let them stand in it. And I'll close with this.
Thank you.
How many of you people put manure in your gardens? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 205, Anthony Spadia.
Madam President, distinguished council. My name is Anthony Spadia. I live at 42 Franklin Street in Braintree. I'm the president of the New England Thoroughbred Industry and have been for 30 years. I wasn't going to speak after I hear the concern of the residents, especially about the difficulty with us damaging or harming your water supply. I wish I had an answer for that. I wish I can sincerely tell you that I would not have helped you with that problem. Why I decided to speak instead of passing was because I think there's been so many misquotes. I've been in the thoroughbred business 60 years. I may not look it, but I'm 81 years old. I've bred, raced, I own a thoroughbred farm. But the most important thing I know is that people at the backside of a racetrack are the hardest-working, caring individuals you'll ever meet in your life. I read remarks made by people in this town that those individuals are not the type of people they would want in their community. You were so wrong. They're the hardest-working people you'll ever meet. Our industry has been put out of business because of casinos. The competition is very difficult. I'm sorry we've been turned down in so many communities, but we are trying to establish something other than racing. We believe that many young people love thoroughbreds, especially young girls. We believe if a racetrack is run properly—and I don't agree the way they have been run— but if a track is run properly, there are so many things we can offer to a community. We're willing to fatten the pot up for the citizenry of Gardner by pledging some of our revenue to also help. What people don't realize is that thoroughbred racing today has lost a lot of its clout. There's no problem with getting maybe six days of racing, but you'll never get 30 days. There isn't enough horses to do that. Many racetracks are closing. But if you run a meet and give away a substantial amount of money and run limited days and do it properly, it will exist, and it will be successful. But we cannot guarantee how we can solve your water problems. We can't guarantee that. I wish we could. But our industry will do a lot of good things to our community if you allow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 206, Stephen Bear.
My name是我的名字是Stephen Bear. I'm from 272 Franklin—sorry, 272 Franklin Street, Belter Town, Mass. I speak for the horses. Horses don't develop until they're about six years old. Their tendons are loose, their bones are still soft, and to race a horse from age two to four is going to cause injuries. Tends to cause injuries. Roughly between 700 and 800 horses die on the track in the United States every year. Roughly about 2,000 horses die in their stalls on the track and after the track. Horse racing is on its way out and has to die. Horses don't want to run like that. That aside, the footprint of the racetrack, I believe, is too small for the area it's going to be in. You might want to look at that to see if that's going to be a problem or not. I won't mention water. Water has been washed throughout this whole place for a long time. I will mention the water drawdown. It takes water to water the fields, to water the horses. You need jockeys that need a place to wash up in, and who knows where the washout from the trailers is going to go because you can't collect that sludge in some sort of container, I don't believe, unless you have some sort of magic vessel. Traffic studies, yes, there might be increased traffic. That's not the worst of your problems. The problem is that you have these heavy-loaded axle vehicles that are going to rip up your pavement. So you'll be paying more money—the time we pay more money—in surrounding towns pay more money to fix the pavement because you have all these heavy axled tracks— heavy axle wheels going over the pavement. It isn't meant for that. It's not designed that way. I'm a civil engineer for the state of Massachusetts. I do build roads. So I know that you have to rate your roads to handle what's going to happen to it, so you've got to do the roads over again. That you also have to look at. With the track, with bringing in people to bet on things and to have these festival days, whatever, you're not just talking about the people from Gardner, you're talking about people outside also. And youth also, in particular, in Gardner or outside Gardner. How vulnerable to wagering. There's an addiction—it gives you an adrenaline, or whatever it's called, in your brain. And I'd watch out for the youth. You're going to end up with more services, including the older people, too. More services you're going to need to deal with addictions, to deal with drug addiction. You're opening a can of worms, it's not going to pay for itself. The money, whatever you're getting from this 1%, whatever it is that you're promised, is not going to be enough to make amends for how much money you're really going to need to put out. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Number 207, Melissa Keithley. Number 207, Melissa Keithley. Thank you. I have to ask one more time, though. Number 207, Melissa Keithley. Number 208, Oliver Keithley.
Yeah.
He left as well. Number 208, Oliver Keithley. Number 208, Oliver Keithley. Number 209, Sean Hayden. Number 209, Sean— Number 209 Sean Hayden. Number 209 Sean Hayden. Number 210 Arlene Brown.
If you can just adjust the microphone, I can help you if you'd like. I just have to make sure. All different ways here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Arlene Brown. I have a horse farm in Rehoboth, Massachusetts. The farm has been in my husband's family since 1856. It didn't come into my husband's hands until the early 60s, at which point it was in disarray. Since then, we have cleared the land, we've built three big barn structures, we've seeded fields, we've got a quarter mile training track, we've made it into a first-class horse We were doing our own hay in our own fields. There were four or five fields around the town that we would hay also. My children and my grandchildren all learned to drive in those fields. As soon as they were tall enough to reach the pedals, we'd prop them up with pillows and they drove the trucks while we did the picking up the hay. My great-grandchildren never will get that opportunity. Every one of those hay fields is now sprouting a housing development. That's why I feel we need something to help support the horse farms in Massachusetts. They're disappearing at an alarming rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 211 David Kramer. Number 211.
I live at 30 Perry Lane in Weston, Mass. Recently, I joined the board of the Massachusetts Thoroughbred Breeders. As a board, we have tried to resurrect breeding in Massachusetts. Unfortunately, with no local racetrack, we have faced an uphill battle as most of the breeders have chose to leave the state and breed in other states that have racing, like New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Maryland. That significantly impacts our farms and our agricultural community. The building of a racetrack is only a small part of the story. A racetrack supports so many other businesses. When we were racing in Massachusetts and a horse needed time off, they went to a farm in Massachusetts. When we bred horses, it was done on a farm in Massachusetts. As land values soar and no racing being conducted, these farms are all in danger of being developed. If you drive through any town in Massachusetts, you'll see a street named Jones Farm Road or Smith Farm Road. You take a look at down those roads and they will be lined with houses. And the only reason that street is named something like Farm Road is because a farm used to be there. We need racing to help these farms survive and preserve open space from being developed. I can't believe what people have said about agriculture, a racetrack not being related to agriculture. Where do the horses come from? They are born, they are raised on farms. These are people that work seven days a week, 365 days a year, and they are not getting rich. They do it because they love the sport and they love horses. Last night, when I was writing this speech, I went through my QuickBooks and I looked at what I'd spent over the last 10 years in my small stable. I spent over $300,000. That was all spent in the state of New York on board, veterinarian, blacksmith, all related, all spent in New York. And some lady mentioned about 16 farms left. Yes, we have 16 farms because we have no racetrack, we have nothing to support it. You go to New York State, there are thousands of farms and they are thriving, and that preserves open space and creates millions and millions and millions of jobs and revenue for businesses, being farms, feed stores, everything related. I ask you to please consider all the benefits a racetrack would have economically for the city of Gardner and the benefits it will provide for the farms and residents of Massachusetts. And no matter what happens with this pro-
If you can finish your thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 212 Carol Cassell. Number 212 Carol Cassell. Number 212 Carol Cassell. Number 213 Jackson Stone. Number 213 Jackson Stone. Number 213 Jackson Stone. Number 214 Kurt Thompson. Number 214 Kurt Thompson. Number 214 Kurt Thompson. At this time, I would like to offer the opportunity for any of the attendees who would like to have a second opportunity to present new testimony at this time. If there's anyone who is from out of town who wants to give any new testimony at this
What I fail to be able to say is that the emotional state of the people in Gardner will also be affected by the track coming in when they have to deal with lining up to get places, to get to the hospital. It also will affect the housing market in Gardner too. At one point, I figured out which way would affect it. I think it's going to cause people not to be able to afford housing or renting apartments or whatever because it'll make the value of the houses, I forget how it works. I'm not a good economist, but basically it's going to cause a problem with housing too, and you don't want this dark cloud over Gardner. It's not a good thing.
Thank you. If there's any, you can come on up if there's anyone who hasn't given any testimony or out of town if you want to speak for a second time. Remember, just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Hannah Kation. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing everybody speak, yeah, it was really inspiring to hear some of you, actually all of you. And I just want to say that the testimony for having the farm built in regards of it, or I'm sorry, for having the racetrack built in regards to it being legitimate agriculture, I think is ridiculous compared to what is happening there now. They are currently helping people recover from addiction, and I think that that's wonderful. It's doing something awesome for the community. Gamma is not a small company. They are, I don't know why they are willing to sell that place. That's kind of beyond me, but it needs to remain the way that it is. It is serving the community and it's going to stop doing that, and it's going to become something negative for Gardner. It's going to become a shadow upon the personality of this community in a way that we don't need. Like, we're okay. We are not struggling, we're not reaching, like we need something so badly that we need to stoop to this level. We don't need a horse racing track, we don't need a gambling track. We shouldn't do this. We just shouldn't. It's ridiculous. And to take away what is already there is just absolutely insane to me. We shouldn't do it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony? Please come up.
Sorry, felt rushed before. I just want to mention a couple of things. Under that 23K where we were instrumental in the Gaming Act, we the horsemen again were instrumental in writing that language that a percentage from the casinos actually go to three different buckets for us. The purses, which is what fund the races to help our horsemen breeders, the breeders themselves, they get a percentage. That's why we have one of the best programs in the country. We try to support to get people to breed and save farms and preserve farms. And then more importantly, what I manage, 4% of that goes towards health and welfare benefits to our trainers that are out there that can barely put, which a lot of people today, food on the table that have some swarm of benevolence when they need it, medical assistance in old age. So it's why we've been very instrumental in how we try to contribute to the Commonwealth in protecting and legislatively writing that language, you know? And then in closing for us, it's not about just running around for the purses, it is about the preservation of the farms, the breeders, the jobs. I personally want to, which was touched upon, work closely, and I've seen it with some of the equine colleges, that there are students out there that want to get in the industry as internships with veterinarians, farriers, you know, and even farm managers. So I just wanted to clarify those two points, and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak? Yes, you have a response.
In a court of law, this would kind of like be-
Name and address again, second time for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lorraine Peabody, 3 Jackson Park, Gardner. But I mentioned to a friend that owns one of the small businesses, it's frequently mentioned, and she hit the roof. I tried to explain that it was in a good context of trying to drum up business and that she was going to make a week's worth more income and whatever, but she said that she would prefer that the name not be used and incorrectly a couple of times, I might add, because she hasn't, she lives out of town and she hasn't had the chance to research. So she's neither pro nor con, but she was afraid, oh, well, not afraid. She just stated that at this point, without the research, she didn't, really not wanted to be associated with one side or the other. And more of amusing because I know I can't necessarily really ask questions of base date, but I'm wondering about the requirements for manure to be removed, which is what I believe Mr. Stephanini said, because right now we have an issue with manure piles on the Gamma property. And if it's required, like I said, I don't know whether it's a state or whatever, but it's already an issue now, and I'd like to trust that, as he said, issues would be resolved and never reappear, but, I don't know, call me old and cynical, but, or doubting Thomas, but for me, the environment is just where it's at, and it really can't be messed with. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, oh, just, I'm sorry, one more time, there was another hand up or a couple other hands up. I'm going to allow, anyone else who hasn't had a chance to speak? From my understanding, there are no more people in Perry Auditorium. Everyone who's here is here in the chamber. Is there anyone else who would like to offer testimony this evening? Anyone also for a second time? Come on up.
My name is Kimberly Blake, 25 Baker Street. So my first speech was pretty quick. However, I found out my son's asleep, so I could stay a little longer. After listening to Mr. Umbrello speak, I think that's how you pronounce his name, there's always been this, you know, these people spend so much money on their horses, they wouldn't hurt something that they spend so much money on, but we know that not to be true. These people have disposable money, they could just buy another horse. And these videos that I've posted of abuse, they're not, you know, these are, is abuse from today. These are not old videos. So it still is very prevalent. Abuse does happen. That's not just something I put out there to, you know, pull at heartstrings. That was the thing I cared most about. And then I'm not going to pretend like I knew about the water. At first, I didn't. You know, I've not been a resident of Gardner for very long, but, you know, after speaking to people who did know about the water, that was pretty alarming as well. I mean, it's no secret that there's, our water's not that great right now. So taking any chance, any chances, there's just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I guess that's it. And I just, again, would like to reiterate that, you know, you guys showing up and all of the hours you spent on research and the meetings and just so much time away from your families and Barbara, you know, you're not even from Gardner, but you took the time to come down. I mean, we appreciated it. And like I said, they were approached, these people did approach many communities before us. They all said no, for whatever reason, I won't pretend to know what reason. I know why Hardwick said no. And there's a lot of people, you know, that are more interested in the revenue it's going to bring to Gardner and the jobs it's going to bring to Gardner, but Gardner has made some significant improvements. I believe we should sit back and wait for better, and this is just not it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give testimony for a second time?
Kevin Bailey, 157 Ash Street, Gardner. Just real quickly, I didn't do the whole three minutes the last time. I hear a lot of like pulling on heartstrings, you know? Gardner needs to help the horse racing industry. It's not Gardner's responsibility for every horse racing or to be the horse racing Mecca of Massachusetts so 16 or so farms can raise more horses. Your responsibility as our representatives to protect our resources. Water is a big thing, we've heard it. The traffic on 140, nobody can debate that, and no traffic light is just going to magically take care of it. If it did, we wouldn't have all the accidents at 101 and 140 out there. We have plenty of accidents and there's a traffic light. So there's a whole lot of other issues with this, but the idea that Gardner, we all have to make, you know, horse, help horse racing for the whole state, that's just trying to lay a guilt trip, and I hope you guys don't fall for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further want to offer any testimony who was present this evening? Is there any further testimony?
Hello, my name is Erin Kiwell, 322 Pearl Street. I'm really proud of all of you guys for voting no. I thought, oh, I shouldn't sign up to speak because my mouth will run away and I'll say something too spicy, but I'm very proud of y'all for voting no for your straw vote, and I hope that no will be your real vote too. I grew up in Gardner, left Gardner, went to Texas, came back to Gardner, and now I am learning one of the crafts to preserve it in Gardner. I love this place. I don't want to see Gardner turn into a horse racing town. Just because we did it in 1870 doesn't make it right. My mom almost died on 140 in 2005. It's a very dangerous road. Our lives were forever changed on 140 when she got hit head-on right by Matthew Street. So I don't think that that road, I personally don't ride my bike on the road anymore because too many of my friends have gotten run over and killed on their bikes. So I used to ride on 140 all the time. I won't do it anymore. It's too many people texting, trucks are too big, too many angry men. I really want to continue to stay in Gardner and do the craft that I'm learning. And usually I'm like, oh my God, Gardner wants to like put all of our poop in the river. Oh my God, how embarrassing. But like, I was very embarrassed that this horse racing facility was even proposed, but I'm very proud that you guys have all voted no, and I hope you continue to vote no, and not just on this parcel, but all parcels in Gardner, because I don't think we need this. I think if you want to know how to raise more taxes, you should ask the artists of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Anybody else wishing to testify for a second time or for a first time? One last call. Anybody here present wishing to give testimony this evening? Okay. Thank you all for that. Per the public hearing rules and procedures, the petitioner is granted the opportunity to reply to questions and comments if desired. Mr. Stephanini, if you can go to the podium.
The podium, okay.
That's probably the best of that. That's probably the best of that.
First, Madam President, councilors, and citizens who came to testify, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to look at our proposal, to listen to it, to ask questions, and to think about it. I cannot argue with putting good health and safety above all else. I can't. I can't argue with the emotional arguments around water quality and the problems that you have. What I can ask you to do is look at the facts. And I've got some specific questions and comments that I'll raise. But I wanted to share with you a few trips along the way as part of this conversation. One of our engineers in this project is somebody who was born and raised in Gardner and started to sensitize the conversation around water in general, not relative to this site, in general in the community and the importance of it. As part of that, we brought on Haley and Aldrich, which is the first water quality firm in the country, a person from MIT and Harvard, founded in 1957, and Mark Haley, who is a 72-year-old engineer who has represented countless numbers of municipalities, state, across the country in helping them deal with their water quality. We started to have a sidebar conversation about what the water quality issues were in this community. And Mark Haley looked at me at one point and said, John, give me $50,000 and I'll tell you how to solve the water problem in Gardner. $50,000. And he walked through how in Cambridge, they had the same exact issue 20 years ago with components in water heaters, not the pipes, the components. And he walked through the chemical analysis and the science of it. We started to follow this train of thought. Are you concerned about the water quality in the site? I asked these folks. You're going to spend $9 million on engineering and design to make sure that there are swales that go with the manure. Not just that picture, but that picture that I showed came out of a brochure similar to the one that the gentleman who came up here showed from the state. And it lays out how you lay around to clean the water, to deal with it, which by the way, is not occurring in farms in this city and across the Commonwealth. It will occur in this site because we will pay for it, we will design it, and we will be required to. In addition to that, I asked Mr. Haley, what else would you do? And he went through specific testing that is very expensive and how you would go about figuring it out. Are we contributing to that? Not a chance. Okay? So I appreciate that water quality is a high issue and it exists in the community. We're prepared to come forward with revenue and expertise to help solve that problem. Not to contribute to it, but to contribute, be part of the solution in dealing with water quality. We don't want to deal with the facts. Well, we don't deal with the facts. In addition to that, a gentleman said to me, I mentioned John Astromakopoulos as an example in Pittsburgh. He and his son train horses. And I said, well, the families moved to Florida, they can't train horses. The son would like to train horses in Massachusetts. But there are no farms. And as the farms disappear, and by the way, the town of Hardwick and the city of Gardner, both independent solicitors and counsel, looked at the zoning and the zoning in the state law. This is an agricultural purpose. Maybe it isn't growing lettuce, but it's an agricultural purpose as part of what goes on here. Number three. So we give an opportunity, and that's not a heart tug. Number three, animal safety. We all have watched the videos and advertisements for dogs that are abused and to donate to programs. I love my dog. I've had six, seven dogs in my lifetime. There are bad owners and there are good owners. Massachusetts horse owners have had a history of being good owners and driving the industry in a direction that matters. This is not going to pollute the Connecticut River. This is not going to pollute or deal with the issues you have with your water having heavy metal in it. We're not putting heavy metals in the ground. And we're heavily regulated and tested to deal with that. We're happy to, as part of our host community, conduct the studies that Aldrich, Haley and Aldrich talked about as part of that. They have, I believe, a good understanding of that, and they've been doing it for municipalities since 1957. Tracks closing. Suffolk Downs closed because it's on two T-stations in the middle of a city and the property is worth $153 million. If you go to East Boston, the community loved the track that was there and wish they had it today. It's today permitted for 12 million square feet of development. Buildings on top of buildings. Someone posted something the other day, something that I already know in the local community and said, what does Plainville think about their track? And they were shocked when people from Plainville said, yeah, we love it. They're great. They contribute to everything. They're part of the conversation. They create jobs. We don't want to be bad neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. I can't address the emotions and the, and the things that are outside the facts, but I can tell you the science and the engineering and how to deal with those issues. Wagering? A lot has been said about wagering. The five to eight million is what we would make out of a wagering pool. The UMass study is dealing with big concept of how to deal with racing and horses as an industry as a total. We're dealing with one piece of that. That study is not relative to us. It's relative to what is occurring all over and all around us. The process? It's been commented about the process in terms of send this to the planning board and the conservation commission and everyone else. And it'd be great if you had answers to every single question. That's not the state law. It's not the process. If we went to the conservation commission tomorrow, they would say, you're not legally before us. Until we have a project to go before them, we can't bring a project before them. When we went to DEP, we had a nice pre-project meeting with them and they walked through rules and regulations. They're not going to give their opinion on specifics until they see specifics. Your planning board, if they start giving out answers to developers before they have the right to do that, they're going to get sued. The community's going to get sued. They don't have the authorization to do that. So the process starts here and then it expounds and goes forward. The dollars that come to the track from the state. The state puts those dollars forward because they want to keep the track, the horse farms from being developed. That's why the state puts $4 million at hand, not because of their, of anything else. What can I tell you we will do? Before you vote, we'll finalize an HCA. You don't believe us, the cynicism, you've got emotions, put it in your health, in your host community agreement and it becomes legally binding. The regulations from DEP, they're legally binding upon us. Our requirements to clean up and to provide groundwater improvements on the site are real. Your problems in the water system, they're not because of this site. All you have to do is look down the tributary and look at what's there. And Mark Haley went down and said, I advise municipalities, let's follow the tributary down. We're at the beginning of that process and everything else that's between us, that's for you to figure out as a community. That's not our piece of this. But we're happy to be part of that discussion. There are a lot of numbers being discussed, and I know it can be confusing because they don't relate to each other and it's hard when people relate numbers. The numbers we've given you, the presentations we've given you, we stand by and they're there for your review. I can't stand here and address any chance, any possibility, any risk. That's a huge standard that no one can meet on anything. I can't answer all of the issues and concerns about traffic, riding a bike on 140. I wouldn't ride a bike on 140. But that isn't us. We want to be part of the solution. We want to be part of, be a good community resident. We want to be the largest taxpayer in this community and provide you with a half million dollars a year. Add up three or four of your largest complexes and that's what we would like to be. The impact we're looking at, one or two events. The other events that folks talk about, 70 events, that's from the UMass study. That's not relative to us. We offered the community to do one or two events for community activities. If you want it, we're happy to do it. If you don't want it, we won't do it. But we're prepared to bring our resources, our folks to the table, and we are prepared to be legally bound by the things we represent to you. I think if you look at the facts and get beyond the emotion, I think we have something that is to the benefit of the community and can be offered. I can't address the world we live in today, which has a lot of noise. And that noise and anger, we're not part of. We haven't made angry assertions or tried to raise emotions. We've tried to provide you with facts. And all I would say is, I'm grateful for your time. I'm grateful for you taking and setting a meeting in the summer to be able to do this, Madam President and councilors. I appreciate your thoughts, your continued discussion. If you have questions, call us. We're an open book. The facts are the facts. The things we can deal with, we will deal with and we will leave this site and this community better than we entered. But I cannot solve all the problems that exist here. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. And thank you for people who testified here today. I took notes and we walked through that. And if folks have specific questions or issues they'd like to know about, please let us know.
Thank you. As everyone has had the opportunity to offer testimony, the petitioner has offered their summary of their presentation and also their comments. I would like to acknowledge that we have received, counselor?
Did you say that somebody could make another comment?
We'll have one last opportunity to come up for the second time. You have one last opportunity to come up for the second time. Would you like to testify the second time?
Can I come up?
I'm gonna, so. I understand. We've spoke before in the meeting. Thank you. You are, you can absolutely, you can come up for the second time, yes.
Hi, I'm Carol from.
Do you just want to put the microphone?
This one? I'm sorry. Carol Chibito at 1353 Green Street on 140. As I said, I'm about six houses away from the proposal. And I just wanted to say that even though I was shaky with my first standing testimony, that's just nerves. It's not really the, I mean, I'm going to just go on. But not all of the testimony given today was based on emotion. There's a lot of realistic concerns that people have. And yes, some people have been here for, you know, decades, so it's a little more important to them. However, the people are what make up the community. And what they feel about things is important. It's not just random emotions. There are actually people that are researching, people who are reading and finding out what's behind all this, who's behind all this. People want answers that are believable. And a sales pitch, once again, is not research. And I do think, in my opinion, that Bay State would be better served if they look at another property. Because that particular property is special in a lot of ways, as everybody said. So my opinion is, Bay State, if they found a property where there wasn't a lot of population or people, or if they found a place that people could go out, like you mentioned earlier, Tanglewood. There are places where there are major, you know, forests and lands that would accommodate something like this. And I know there's a lot going in on both sides of the issue. Yet, I feel if Bay State moved on to another location where they would, really, because of the water and other people's concerns of traffic in that particular corner, they would better serve themselves and us by checking out where they could actually go that isn't going to interfere so much with people's properties and concerns. So that's my suggestion. I don't know what's going to develop in the next few weeks, but I do say that that would benefit them more because the more people hear about this, you notice more people are coming forward. At one meeting, I guess there was like 20 people. But now there's like, I don't know how many people spoke tonight. But as this becomes more visible of an issue, especially even real estate agents, people like that, people are going to be concerned about values in their property. And again, the ambiguous language that might be in any type of community contract and the $500,000 a year promise, it's not going to even start till 2026. But even after that, there's always a condition, always an option, always a way out, always a back door to get away from your contracts. I ask that you think about it as a council, as a community. But I also ask that Bay State would find something with all the money they want to invest. There's going to be something else that's not in people's backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. As everyone has offered testimony this evening and had the opportunity to do so, I would like to acknowledge that we have received written testimony from residents. And that written testimony will be included in the record of the public hearing. Also, just another reminder that if anyone who was unable to attend this evening or preferred not to give oral comments, would like to submit written comments, they can do so until 4:30 tomorrow, Wednesday, July, almost tomorrow, almost today. Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, by mailing or emailing Elizabeth Doran, our Assistant City Clerk at 95 Pleasant Street here at City Hall. Or you can email her, edoran@gardner-gma.gov. That will all be included also in the record of the public hearing. We would also encourage citizens as well to reach out to your city councilors for any information that you would like for us to consider on this item. Additionally, I would like to just acknowledge the straw vote that was taken at the informal meeting. It was mentioned several times during the testimony. The council took a straw vote, which is an unofficial vote. It is not an official vote. The item still is active before the council. But during the straw vote, we are able to, I'm sorry, during the informal meeting, we are able to take a straw vote, which is a way to basically get an idea of where the council stands on an item. It is a, it is a normal thing that we do at informal meetings in order to get a sense of where the council stands. That was before the public hearing this evening, and that's what people were referring to. That straw vote was a 10 to zero no on the item. And I just wanted to make that clear, since people mentioned votes, that it was not an official vote, it was an unofficial vote. I know many of the people tonight said that. But just for the public watching the public hearing, who maybe were not watching the informal meeting, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Beyond that, I would like to thank all of the citizens who were here this evening. Their patience with the technical issues earlier. It is my job to be sure that the public hearing is run by the different procedures that we have, the laws and the rules. And I did my best to do that. And it was made possible by the people here, following the procedures that we had in place. I want to thank everyone in the chamber, the people who are in the peri auditorium this evening. This is part of the process. This is what we do. And I can't thank you enough for showing up to offer your comments and also for being here this evening. And especially all the people who stuck it out till 11:30 at night. Thank you so much. But it is really important to engage in city business and allow the council to be able to do so. So thank you for that process. Thank you to the petitioners for being here this evening, for your, your presentation during the informal meeting, as well as answering the council's questions. And then for being here during all of the testimony and as well as offering your comments and answers to your, to questions at the end of the, of the testimony. And beyond that, I also just want to acknowledge all of the staff that was here this evening to help everything go smoothly and be sure that all of the citizens have the information they needed so that they were able to. they needed so that they were able to sign up and be heard at the public hearing. It is incredibly important. It's part of what we do and I want to thank them all very much because they were able to make this possible this evening. And that is all I wanted to offer at this point. At this point, I would declare the public hearing closed. Thank you all very much.